Call this meeting to order. We just like to make, make known that this is being livestreamed. And if you, and if someone would want to go to the KDE website, you could follow this meeting like all of our meetings. Want to thank also our closed captioning group that's here, here with us today, interpreters. I'd ask if you have a cellphone, that this would be a, just a great time to silence it, or mute it, turn it off. Thank you, thank you very much. Jennifer, if you'd call the roll.
Yes, Ben Kundoff.
Here.
Tracy Cusack.
Here.
Rich Gemmell.
Here.
Kathy Gornick.
Here.
Hal Heiner.
Here.
Gary Houchens.
Here.
Alisa Johnson.
Here.
Joe Papalia.
Here.
Milton Seymour.
Here.
Amanda Stamper. Laura Timberlake.
Here.
And Melissa Bell on behalf of CPE President Erin Thompson. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a, we have a quorum. If you'd join me now with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the weight of the items on our agenda today, I'd ask that you join me in just a minute of silence before we begin the agenda. Thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda is approval of the meeting minutes for our April 10th meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? I have a motion for their approval. Kathy, second from Ben. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. It passes unanimously. Okay, next item on our agenda is a report from Secretary Derek Ramsey, Education and Workforce Development Cabinet.
Yes. Right on here. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to talk about the Office of Employer and Apprenticeship Services. We launched an employer outreach campaign. Work Opportunity Tax Credit is a federal program intended to incentivize business to hire specific target groups that face significant barriers to employment. Population benefits include veterans, ex-felons, long-term unemployed, TANF recipients, and SNAP benefit recipients as well. Companies can receive tax credit ranging from $1,200 to $9,600 depending on the targeted group. Next, I'd like to talk about the award at OVR. OVR being Office of Vocational Rehab was awarded $2.5 million. We're one of eight states to receive the retained grant. Pilot will also target workers who have substance abuse disorders or exit or developed as a result of taking medication after injury or illness. The pilot would also focus on early coordinated health and employment services preventing long-term unemployment due to injury or illness caused by a slip or fall. Work Ready Kentucky Scholarship, I think we're all familiar with that, but just want to give you some numbers. As of May 20th, 2019, KEE received 7,100 applications for the 18, 19 year. Work Ready scholarships, there were 1,714 applicants, 24% have received disbursements totaling $5.6 million. Transitioning military personnel and veterans with aviation or power plant mechanics experience are now eligible to become Federal Aviation Administration certified in Kentucky. Why this is significant, with the apprenticeship program, what we found is that men and women that were in our military, they had all this training for the years that they were there, but for some reason or another, they got no credit when they came out for that. So we're working to help them receive credit so that their transition could be that much easier. The program also aligns with civilian training requirements in an effort to reduce barriers to certification and place transitioning soldiers and veterans into Kentucky's workforce. This condenses a 18-month certification program into a semester for qualifying veterans. Create a more efficient aircraft mechanics pathway for transitioning soldiers and the veterans to obtain long-term careers earning more than $60,000 annually. I think I've mentioned this before, the KTEC. Back in the fall, the KTEC, the KTEC, which is the 9 to 14, and we had a partnership between Hazard Community College, University of Kentucky Center for Excellence, and Rural Health, Appalachian Regional Hospital, Juniper Health, and Hazard Community Independent Schools as well as Perry County. Now, what this is, is you understand the 9 to 12, but this is a 9 to 14. And so what these young people will do, their freshman year, they'll start taking courses to get ready for the upper-level courses. Then as a sophomore, junior, senior, they start to take on college courses. Some have graduated in five years, and on the long side, they've graduated in six years. Why is this exciting to me? Our governor stated he wants us to be the manufacturing and engineering hub of America. And so having said that, we have to have people that are educated to be competitive. Further, one of my teammates was just at a conference, and so we're starting to look at things differently. While at this conference, he learned that what, what America's looking at now is thinking that every, in the next five years, most of our folk will have to be retooled in training. And so what we're going to talk about in the Workforce and Education Cabinet, I've met with Dr. Thompson as well as Commissioner Lewis, and we're saying, and we agree that our folks need to be educated and reeducated about every five years. And so that is the trend, and so we're looking forward to doing so. Adult education, there's a collaboration, Adult Ed came over to our cabinet back in January, and we have a collaboration with, with the Justice Cabinet. And the interesting part about that is that we have 340, last year we had 347,000 people that do not have a GED nor a high school equivalent. And I've mentioned when Secretary or Chairman, when Chairman Heiner was the Secretary of Education and Workforce, one of the things I used to always tell the secretary was that I always thought he had the heaviest lift. And the reason I thought he had the heaviest lift was during '08, '09, 200,000 people that left the workplace did not come back. And so this morning, we have 110,000 jobs. Fast forward that out five years, that number could be between 250 and 300. Fast forward it out to 2030, that number could be as much as 650,000. And so all those that are on the sideline, all those that have been incarcerated, all those that have disabilities, all those that have left the military, we need them to fill these jobs. That's the only way I believe we can get this done. Going back to the collaboration with Justice Cabinet, with this collaboration, last year there were 16,000 people, 17,000 people that were released. And also keep in mind, the folk that are incarcerated, 95 to 98% of them will be returning home at some point. So we have to understand that our brothers and sisters are coming back, they've served their time, they too have to be a key part in our jobs being filled. With the parole board, I'm going to be meeting with them. Because with this collaboration since February 11th to today, they have referred 1,500 people to us. Of that 1,500, only 100 have taken 12 hours or more toward their GED. So I'm going to meet with the parole board, I'll later be meeting with the circuit court judges, because in statute, it states that if a person has a felony or a misdemeanor, they can be directed by parole or by the circuit court judges to complete their GED. And so we're going to develop that relationship further, and hopefully we can change these, turn these numbers around. Last, a year and a half ago, I went and spoke with Northern Kentucky University, because I believe with the apprentice model, because of what I'd heard around the state, as I go and talk to employers, the cry is that a person can come to my company while educated, while having a degree, yet it's taken them a year to a year and a half before they get a return on their investment. For a large company, that's okay. Midsize, smaller company, that is not okay. So I introduced the idea at Northern Kentucky of the apprenticeship model. And so two weeks ago, I was happy to go to a press conference in Northern Kentucky. One of our companies, Ion Apex, that's an electric company, they signed an agreement with Northern Kentucky University, stated that for their work as an apprentice, they will give them up to 15 hours of credit toward their degree. And so that, to me, is changing the model. That is how we become competitive in the U.S. and in the world space. I'll answer any questions, sir.
Thank you, Secretary.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is, and please have the record reflect that President Thompson is with us this morning, hello? As President of the Council on Post-Secondary Education.
Thank you. First of all, I am not Melissa Bell. Melissa Bell is my new Chief Academic Officer. They tripled me this morning, but I felt it was important enough for me to be here to give the report at least and stay as long as I can. Because I do appreciate when we're talking about this P-20 relationship, that it has to be something more than just talk. And so I appreciate the Commissioner and the Secretary having the kind of conversations with us that matter. And with that in mind, over the last, quickly just to tell you, over the last eight months, I've been doing tours around Kentucky, talking with employers, talking with P-12 educators, P-12 students, and talking with post-secondary folks, about a variety of things, parents and families and so on. I'm finding out a lot of stuff that I think you'd be very interested in. First of all, people don't know what college is. You would think that we do, but we don't. I even had superintendents and principals say, "Well, Lord, I didn't know that what, if we got a technical degree, that was college." Well, it is college. And the idea that all of our citizens need a post-secondary credential that matters. So when we hear people say, "Well, they don't need college, everybody don't need college," well, I can show you the data that disputes that easily. They do. They don't need a four-year degree maybe, but they need college. And so this tour is, isn't much about telling people that higher education matters. We can't get where we need to go currently or in the future unless we get more people with a post-secondary certificate, credential, or degree that matters. And when I say that matters, not just any degree, but one that has quality, one that can have outcomes of sustainable employment. So that's the tour, and I'm talking to people, students, about, are you ready to go to college? Amazing to me, students even with high scores are saying, "You know, I just don't feel I'm ready to go to college." And I think as a group, we need to be thinking about what that's really saying to us. They're saying that I don't know if I'm prepared to do it academically, socially, emotionally, culturally. And this brings us to task about how we approach this conversation. The other thing I'm hearing is about many that don't believe that they can afford to go to college. And so affordability to me, and I'll make sure I do all this quickly, I promise, is two things. One is the perception that I can't go to college because I can't afford to, and what that's telling me is they don't have all the information. So we need to get that information out at a much deeper level in a very, what I consider to be a very rote way, that they understand. But we're also going to have to do a better job of talking about student debt, it's not about affordability, believe it or not. Student debt, if done the right way, it's very much an investment. If it's done the wrong way, it's criminal. You know, if they somehow get in debt and don't get a credential that matters, that's criminal. If they get in debt and get a credential that can easily pay that student debt off, that's an investment. So there's a perception of affordability, and then there's real affordability. Many of our students that get into college can't finish college because they don't have enough money to get through. So we have to address this somehow at the state level. The other thing we're hearing fairly strong is that many feel like they don't have the employability skills in many cases. When I'm talking to our post-secondary students, many are graduating, and many are saying, "Okay, I got this degree, but no one told me what I needed to do with it. What do I do now?" So we're going to have to look at what we're doing even in the post-secondary space, if you want to call it that, that very clearly helps them to understand exactly the kind of jobs they can get, the kind of pay they can get, and we have to do it earlier than what we've talked about before. And it's more than just a career center, a career services, helping them fill out a resume, it's about starting early to line out exactly what they need to do. We're worried, no doubt about it. As of July 1, our employer contribution to our pension goes from a 49% to an 83%. What that means, since we've been cut so much, that means we're going to have to start laying people off at our comprehensive campuses and KCTCS. That's just the truth. That's not, that's raising scare tactics, that's the truth. This causes us some real interesting, what I call, conditions to think about next year and how, and we're pushing the campuses to do more. And if you saw our latest accountability report, you know, we had the highest graduation jump than we've had in, you know, decades. So we need to actually do more than just push them, we need to help them to be supported in getting where they need to go. Also, over the last several months, you know, I've been meeting with Rotary Clubs, going with all of our boards on our campuses, and talking about what our campuses need to do to think about disruption, to get where we need to go. Because it's not just about our KCTCS folks being the workforce gatherers, it's also about our four-year campuses. And so we're going to have to put on a different lens when we think about the jobs that we're doing. As you've heard me say before, no one goes in post, well, maybe somebody, but very few go in post-secondary without the idea that they don't want a good job afterwards. So we need to start thinking in a different mentality between our industry and businesses and post-secondary on the front end to talk about how we do that. We're redesigning what we're doing with the Council, we have a big strategic agenda, we're getting to attainment 60% by 30. That's to give us some national averages to compete with other states, no doubt, but bottom line, we're going to have to do a little more focus in how we do that. So we've taken our big strategic agenda, taken it down to the big five priorities, I won't go over those now, but causing us all to think far more strategically about the work we're doing and how we're doing it. We are going to have a few other things that I would invite you all to, the Post-Secondary Trusteeship Conference in the fall. Please come. We're going to have a lot of conversation at Governor's Trusteeship Conference about how we can all work together more in this governance space, if you will, to be far more concentrated on issues of access, affordability, student success, employability, and all those other items. And I got a lot more of them, I'm just going to leave it there, sir, and answer any questions that you may have.
How can we learn about the date and time? Will Jennifer send that to us, or?
We will give you all the information early. I'll make sure that it's sent to each of you, or I'll send it to the Commissioner and he can distribute it.
Okay, thank you.
What did you say you're paying for retirement?
We, in our employer contribution now, we're paying 49 cents per dollar. And as of July 1, it goes to 83 cents per dollar. And that's not counting all the other benefits we're giving folk. It's not sustainable.
So for every dollar in payroll, you're going to pay another 83 cents?
We're going to pay, well, from 49 to 83 cents, whatever that differential is, that's what we'll pay starting July 1.
And when you add in the other benefits, it's over 100%.
Way over 100%, yeah.
So we're paying people more to not work than we are to work?
Well, I mean, no, I'm talking about those that...
How can you survive that way?
Yeah, I'm talking about the folks we have currently employed, right?
Yeah.
So we can't survive that way unless there is a, some reprieve on that, because we're at a point that, and it's been going up over the years, and it's even predicted to go up more beyond that 83 cents.
I don't know how an organization can survive with, with that kind of cost. Or, I mean, private employers, according to the U.S. Department of Labor, are paying an average of 12% to 13%, including social security contribution for retirement.
There are consequences to being the 49th state in the country in unfunded pension liability. It absolutely has to be addressed.
Where's our leadership? I mean, this, this isn't an overnight problem that just suddenly dropped out of the sky, but...
It's a two-decade old problem.
Who's working on a solution to this?
President Thompson, wanted to thank you for your message, especially, it's like a breath of fresh air about every student needing post-secondary. And that doesn't necessarily mean the academic, you know, PhD, even bachelor's degree. I know even from discussions this week with a contractor, he said, "We've had to give up an entire line of work because we cannot find the individual with the skills, and it's almost irregardless of how much they pay." They cannot, I mean, pay is moving up really rapidly, if you know how to, in IT, construction trades, healthcare, it's all moving, and it's a way to have a financially stable life. Companies are not creating low-skill jobs, it just doesn't, it's just not happening. And the low-skill jobs that, that are there are disappearing. I mean, if you've been into a McDonald's lately, the cash registers are all disappearing. I mean, those jobs are disappearing, so for every one of our students, our 600,000-plus students in our schools, we need to find a path and encourage a path, and I know we're all working on this, but encourage a path through post-secondary, whether it's credentials, associates, bachelors, and on, because that's where the jobs are. That's how you can support yourself and a, and a family later on. So I really appreciate, you know, your message directly on point, that when we say college, it doesn't necessarily mean, you know, that, that you're going to be a, you know, teacher at a university someday, although that's fine, but just acquiring some skill will, you know, huge life outcome changes.
It is, and I appreciate saying that to you. And I want to be clear, we hear a lot about how automation's going to replace all these jobs. That's absolutely correct, they will replace a lot of jobs, but guess what? A lot of other jobs will be created. I talked about that this week. And those are the high-skill jobs that you may not need a four-year degree for, but there are, there is a need for a four-year degree too, right? So the idea that we are going to have to do better, I think, in helping people to understand what college really is and the importance of this mix to make it happen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Now we have a report from Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, Chair Heiner. A couple of things I want to, to share with the board this morning, and I want to begin by recognizing our new KDE employees. So first, I want to recognize employees from the Office of Finance and Operations. We have two new staff members. First, Josh Whitlow, Resource Management Analyst III. Is Josh here? Welcome to Josh. And Sarah Norman, Training Development Specialist II. Thank you both. We have two new staff members in the Office of Education Technology, Tracy Easter, System Consultant IT, and Tanya Arnett, Resource Management Analyst III. They are out working. In the Office of Legal Services, we have Brianna Listerman, Staff Attorney II, John Landon, Staff Attorney II, and Charlie Nelson, who's joined us for the, for the summer as an intern. John is here with us. In the Office of Continuous Improvement and Support, Melissa Farrell, Education Administration Program Consultant II, and Erica Tipton, Education Administration Program Consultant In the Office of Special Education and Early Learning, we have four new staff members, Christine Smith, Administrative Specialist III, Jessica Jones, Exceptional Children Consultant, Stephanie Ernst, Education Academic Program Consultant, and Pamela Ayer, Executive In the Office of Career and Technical Education and Student Transition, Joshua Mitchum, Education Vocational Program Consultant, Tanya Warren, Education Academic Program Consultant, and Gillian Atherton, Education Academic Program Manager. And finally, five new staff members in the Office of Commissioner. Not new, but returning to us, Loretta Johnson, Executive Administrative Secretary, you probably meet in the very front office when you, you come in, Daniel Harris, Graphic Design Coordinator, Jacob Perkins, Information Officer I, oh, I said Daniel, Danielle, I'm sorry Danielle. You think I don't know her. Jacob Perkins, Information Officer I, that's Jacob there on the side, Raphael Hyatt, Administrative Specialist I, and Melina Gallagher, Administrative Specialist III. Next, ladies and gentlemen, you have a, a copy of a report that I've provided for you, and I've titled that report Funding and. I won't, won't read that report, but I want to lift a few highlights from it for you. As Commissioner, I've had the privilege and the honor of traveling our state on a weekly basis, and have the privilege of spending time with students, parents, community members, educators, and leaders across our Commonwealth. And I want members of the board to know that we truly have some outstanding folks who are leading schools and districts, who are in classrooms, making sure our kids are learning, really outstanding initiatives, programmatic initiatives, major movement happening in every corner of this Commonwealth. It's one of the reasons I've made it such a priority to spend at least a couple days each week. I don't think there's a single week that's passed where I haven't spent some time in school districts and in classrooms. It's invaluable time, it allows me to, to have a much better understanding of what's happening on the ground. I had a tremendous amount of respect for the professionals that serve here at KDE and across our Commonwealth before becoming Commissioner, and my respect for those folks has only grown in the time since I have been Commissioner. One of the things that, that frustrates me, however, about our education policy conversation is I don't believe it is robust enough. In fact, most of the education policy conversation that I hear in the streets, in the public, revolves around funding. So let's start with funding. And let's say that funding is incredibly important. Let's also say that there is no way for the Commonwealth of Kentucky to achieve the goals we have for ensuring that every kid in this Commonwealth has access to the type of opportunities we want them to have without additional strategic funding in public education. There's no way. Now, with my knowledge of, of not only the education budget and my understanding of the state budget, I have to be frank and tell you, I'm not sure where those dollars come from. But there's no way for us to achieve what we want to achieve without additional strategic investment in some key areas. What frustrates me, however, about the conversation is that it seems to only include funding. And it seems to be, the dominant narrative out there seems to be that the only thing holding us back in public education in Kentucky is funding. That if we just had additional funding in public education, we could address the things that we need to address. There's surely acknowledgement out there that kids come with, from lots of different circumstances, that kids come to us with significant challenges, whether at home, in community, health challenges, learning differences, all types of things comes, kids come with us. But the suggestion that increased funding in public education is going to fix the equity issues and the achievement issues in our state is flat-out wrong. It's untrue. So let me reiterate again, additional strategic investment in public education is absolutely necessary. It is also flat-out untrue to believe that investing more in public education is going to fix the inequities that we find. In fact, in some cases, if the only thing that you do is invest additional funding in public education without fixing some of the underlying structural and policy deficiencies in our system, you will have better-funded, inequitable systems. You have to address both. Let me give you an example. One area where we absolutely need additional strategic investment is in career and technical education. This is an area where the state... This is an area where the state board has had lots of conversation. We do not currently provide for kids across Kentucky the opportunity to pursue, or opportunities to pursue, learning in lots of in-demand areas in career and technical education. We provide it for some kids. For other kids, the opportunities simply are not there. I was talking with superintendents in Davies County and Owensboro City Schools. That's one example where there's a pocket, there's a region of the state around that city where there are just not opportunities for kids. It's a hole in our structure. Investment is necessary. Investment in facilities, investment in equipment, in updating equipment to make sure that we are able to provide the space, the learning that kids are going to need. What's also evident, though, is unless we address the structure, just funding more won't do it. Here's why. There's a problem in Kentucky with the way we fund career and technical education. There's actually never been a comprehensive look and strategy for ensuring that every kid, regardless of where they are, has access to career and technical education. It's one of the reasons we end up with a hole like the one in Owensboro. We have a system where we have 53 area technology centers. Those are our state-run area technology centers. Forty-two locally-operated technology centers. Not enough funding to support operations or instruction in the state-run centers, and we only fund a portion of the locally-operated centers. Just increasing money, increasing funding in the line item for career and technical education does not fix those flaws. The other piece that's not fixed by increasing funding in the line item is the reality in career and technical education that we struggle to attract teachers to teach in these areas. So if you're going to teach in career and technical education field, you have to come to us with significant industry experience. So these are not folks who went through your traditional teacher preparation program, exited, and at 22, 23 years old are entering their first career. These are folks that have had lots of times other careers before they came to education. But we expect them to enter a system, a profession, where we pay them like they were a 22-year-old who just finished college. Just investing more money in public education does not fix that structural flaw. That's a structural flaw. Moving away from career and technical education, I'll give you another one, but this is critically important, and it's in the area of teaching. Bar none, there is nothing more important to the success of kids than having a high-quality and effective classroom teacher. So much so that for my own kid, if I had to choose between having her in a subpar facility with an amazing teacher or an amazing facility with a mediocre teacher, I'd take the subpar facility with the amazing teacher anyway, any day. That's the type of impact classroom teachers have. Classroom teachers matter so much to what we can accomplish. Even the influence of administrators, of leaders, is largely about their ability to attract and retain and support high-quality classroom teachers. That's why leaders and administrators are important. With that said, we have a structure around teaching that has to be changed. One, we are no longer able to attract the type of folks and the number of folks that we need to into the profession. It requires that we take a fresh look at the profession, just like professions across the board have, in recognizing that there are generational differences, that younger people are looking for different things in careers, looking for different things in jobs. They have different wants, different desires. It's time for us to take a look at teaching and determine whether or not we need to make some fundamental shifts to make it more attractive to younger people. Potentially younger people that don't intend to do the same thing for 20, 25, 30 years. Because fewer and fewer of the younger generation are interested in doing that. We're going to have to take a fresh look at training, a fresh look at professional development. We're also going to have to take a fresh look at the incentives that we provide for teachers. Because if we're honest about it, there is no incentive currently to be a great teacher. We would be foolish to assume, to make the statement that all teachers are great. Because all of nothing is great. We wouldn't say all doctors are great. We wouldn't say all lawyers are great. We wouldn't say all dentists are great. Why would we assume that all teachers are great? We know that to not be true. Just like most professions, we have some great teachers. We have some teachers that frankly should not be teaching. And most of our teachers lie in between those two. Just like everything else, we have to find a way to create incentives for people to want to be better. In terms of maintaining the number of teachers that we have, retention is a critical issue for us. And the solution that's often floated is around paying teachers more. You won't find a person that's a bigger advocate for teacher pay than me. I think teachers should be paid their worth. And in fact, I think you'd struggle with coming up with enough to pay really talented and effective teachers. The challenge for us, however, is that we shoot ourselves in the foot often with retaining teachers. Oftentimes, we take very new teachers, very inexperienced teachers, ones that need support, that need lots of guidance, and we put them as first-year teachers in the most difficult, challenging situations that no one else wanted. Just tends to be what's left. And provide them with very little support. And then we're surprised that our retention looks like it does. Again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but increasing the funding in the line item to public education does not fix that. That's a structural and policy flaw in our system. It's bad for young teachers. It's bad for retention, and hence, bad for the bottom line of school districts. And most importantly, it's bad for kids. Because we have a system that is designed to put our lowest, our least experienced, oftentimes, least effective teachers in classrooms to serve, most often, the kids who need more experienced and effective teachers the most. So the point I'm trying to make in this, in this piece, in this conversation with you, is that yes, we have to continue to advocate for strategic funding in public education. I've been clear with that, with the board, throughout our conversations over the last year. I'm clear about that in public. We'll have conversations about that as we talk about the budget and our request for additional monies to support schools moving forward. But this notion that's out there, this narrative that's out there that the only thing we need is more money is flat-out wrong. It has to be funding and reform. Funding and structural policy change that supports what's doing right for kids. And I know you don't need any additional motivation, but there's one additional thing that I want to share with you. And this is in the board portal for you. I want to leave you with a little data. I will do my best to give you some fresh data every time we meet. This comes from our research team. We have a research team here at KDE that is small but mighty. Aaron Butler, Hannah Paquette are our two researchers in Karen Dodd's office. And they've been doing some work to support our initiatives around novice reduction.
It's in our folders.
Great, so everyone has a paper copy. So just to remind you, novice, as we focus for the last couple of months, means... That was your term.
What is it?
Novice means, my terminology was academic emergency. Kids scoring at the novice level, the lowest performance level on our assessments, means that kids demonstrate little to no understanding of the content at grade level. So if you take a look at the data that our researchers provide for us, this is the first time I've seen data like this. They actually have data, pulled data, for kids who were third graders in the 2012, 2013 academic year, and then followed those kids, looked at them longitudinally up through their eighth-grade year, the 2017, 2018 school year. So in order to be included in this dataset, this is a statewide dataset, but in order to be included, you had to have data for assessments throughout that entire period. But that's the sample. What you have here, broken out by mathematics and reading, and I'll start with all students at the top. 1,527, or 14.3% of these students were novice at all grades. In grades three through eight, meaning if you trace them from their third-grade year through their eighth-grade year, 14% of them never left the novice category. Not even once. Not in fourth grade, not, never. They've been novices all the way through. If you look at the second category, second column, it tells us that a little over 2,500 of these kids, 23.5% who started in novice, moved up at least one time, possibly more than once, but were novice again by the eighth grade. And then in the last column, you see 6,600 of these kids, all kids, or 62% of them were no longer novice by the time they reached the eighth grade. So we understand those three columns. I want to call your attention now to African-American students. And our researchers are working on creating some additional categories. Specifically, we wanted to be able to take a look at kids who come from low-income backgrounds. But I want to call your attention to African-American kids and break out what this means. This means that in mathematics, for African-American kids, that we track from grade three through grade eight, 25.4%, a quarter of African-American kids, never left the novice category. Means not once in grade three through eight did they score even at the apprentice level. 26.8% of them had moved out of novice one or more times, but were novice still by the time they were in eighth grade. You put those together, that means more than half of the African-American students who were novice in grade three continued to be novice in grade eight. And then in the last column, you see just about half had moved up to the apprentice level or higher. Reading is a similar story. African-American kids, 30% who started at novice in grade three had never moved out of novice, not even once, from grade three to grade eight. 30% moved out of novice one or more times, but was still novice by eighth grade. And then just over 40% were no longer novice. We're going to get additional data, but friends, this is criminal. This is criminal. And you can go with the narrative and the conversation all you want, that testing doesn't matter. I'll be the last one to ever suggest that testing is an end-all, be-all, the last one to ever suggest that it's the indicator that should be supreme, and we don't consider other things. But you've got to be able to give me a good reason as to why black kids who start in novice, over half of them, are still novice at grade eight. I don't think we have a great answer to that, but we have to find it, and we have to do better. This is unacceptable. Yes, we'll advocate for funding, but we're also going to advocate for major structural and policy reform within our system so that we can do a better job of closing these gaps. I'll stop there, and I'm happy to take any questions, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. That was enlightening, powerful, and concerning. I just want to make sure I understand on figures here. If you look at reading, all students, for instance, in eighth grade, we're saying that 56% are apprentice or higher. So that means in eighth grade, we'd have 43.6%, roughly, some of those other two columns. So nearly half, half the students in eighth grade in reading are novice. Am I reading that correctly?
No, this is looking, please come up, Aaron. This is looking at something different. That 56.4% that read means 56.4% of all the third graders who began as novice...
Who began as novice.
Were still novice by eighth grade. And that's the number for the kids who had moved up once or more, but then came back as novice. It's saying that 17.9% who started as novice never left novice. 25.7% moved up one or more times, but were novice... No, it's 25.7% moved up one or more times, and they were novice again by eighth grade. 56.4% were no longer novice. Aaron, did you want to add?
No, that is correct.
So it looks at third grade and then tracks third through eighth? And so the sample set is just those at novice in third grade?
That's correct.
Okay, that stayed with the schools.
So 43.6% stayed novice.
Sorry, my computer died, but I...
Yes.
Yes.
So does that mean that 43.6% of these kids can't read? Is that what that's saying?
Specifically, if you are at novice, it means that you have not demonstrated understanding of the content at grade level in reading.
So theoretically, they would not be, according to the new graduation requirements, they would not be eligible to graduate.
Not unless they could demonstrate that they have basic skills in reading through a collection of evidence.
Of some other evidence, yes.
Are you following a certain trend for them as to what grade they're peaking at? And then are they having a fallout, fifth grade, sixth grade?
That's an interesting question. We haven't explored that yet. I will say, when we did look at this, we saw a lot of up and downs. Students would be novice one year, move up to apprentice, maybe stay up another year, but then immediately drop down. You had some that actually moved from novice to proficient, then dropped down back to novice or something. So there's just a lot of movement up and down.
What is that correlated to?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Right, I mean, is there a way to track what are the connections to what is happening to kids when they're going up and back down?
Yeah, it's going to be different things. So one of the things you have to keep in mind is that with all kids, what you see in test scores, what you see in student learning is in part a function of what's happening in school, but it's also in part of a function of what's happening at home, what's happening in community. So you could have, you could have kids who's experiencing trauma at home, experiencing community trauma, different changes in their lives that impact, and you know this is the case, that impact some kids' scores, right? That's happening for all kids across Kentucky, regardless of group that you break out, low-income kids, African-American kids, white kids, Latino kids. With that said, you, there is no way you should see the types of disparities that you're seeing by race. And my guess is when we, we break this out by socioeconomic status, you're going to see really significant disparities as well that we need to be able to better explain and to address. It is not okay, it is not sufficient to say that these are just the differences that kids come to us with, 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 with challenging circumstances. And the reason, I, I can say with, with even greater confidence today than I could have said over a year ago, is I get a chance to visit with superintendents, teachers, and schools who are dealing with incredibly challenging situations with kids. And some of those folks are flat-out getting it done. And, and when you talk to these superintendents, you talk to teachers, you talk to principals, what they will tell you is not often, we're getting it done because we have more money. Would, would more money help? Yes, absolutely. But what they will tell you is this is what we're doing that's different than the typical district, or the typical school, or the typical leader. These leaders, these teachers, they understand very clearly that they're doing stuff that's outside of the norm. And a lot of the times, the things they're telling me about, they're not doing them because they got more money to do it. It's because they've owned the challenge. They've owned the fact that these are the challenges that our kids have come to us with, and we're going to do, we're going to, going to break out of the box and do everything we can to serve our kids the best way we can.
Commissioner, let me just throw something in. This, this happens to be my research area. I just want to be clear about a couple of things. The Commissioner's right, there's a lot of influences, some external, some internal, that could correlate with all this, but this is what we know. We do have solutions here. What we know that you can take kids from different kinds of backgrounds, whether it's impoverished, whether it's unsafe zones in neighborhoods and so on. Inside of an institution, inside of the school, it can be made up. We have seen those deficits being made up of kids that quote-unquote, based on external influences, shouldn't be successful, are coming in with a quote-unquote deficit, being made up with highly effective teachers. Same thing we see in post-secondary. The other, I have a statistical question here in a second, but the other thing that we know, though, this tracks itself, I do survival analysis all the time of people that didn't make it and go all the way back. This trace it, I mean, this is excellent because it goes straight back to this conversation. This doesn't stop at eighth grade. It exacerbates itself in the ninth grade, and it keeps moving and it accelerates even. So what we have here, I love the statistical stratification of looking at it at this level with a longitudinal sort of look. Because I think if we did this all the way, we can look at those holes or those particular pieces that we can influence. But I think that's policy. I think that's good policy that we start looking at it at that pinpoint level, statistical item. Are you not including any of the folks that moved out of apprentice to a higher level? These are all...
Can you say that one more time?
You have another level beyond apprentice, right?
They're in that last column, Dr. Thompson. So that last column is, is the students who have moved out of novice by eighth grade.
Apprentice and up. So it's not just the apprentice, is my question. So apprentice and above. So you literally then have, in mathematics, you still have fifty-three percent of our students remaining in novice. We're African-American students then.
So what percentage of total students is that, is novice?
I'd have to do it on my computer, and it's, it has died unfortunately, but... So you're asking, what is the total percentage of students in general that are, are novice?
Right, because, you know, we're talking fifty percent, but is it fifty percent of fifty percent?
It's, it's around seventeen or eighteen percent. Ballpark, ballpark figure in, in total that are novice. Now, when you break that out by socioeconomic status across the state and by race and ethnicity, socioeconomic status gets you about a little over a quarter of kids at, by novice. For comparison, African-American kids, a little over a third of, of all African-American kids at novice.
To add to what the Commissioner said, to just put it in numbers, if you go across the line there, it's about eleven thousand students that were novice, and we have ballpark fifty-some thousand in, per, per grade, right? We have six-hundred-and-fifty thousand students overall. So about fifty thousand in a grade, about eleven thousand were, yeah, novice in third grade. And obviously, those numbers jump around, but yeah, around that seventeen, twenty, whatever. And I think just in reading alone, I remember all students in two thousand seventeen, we were at twenty-two percent for state, third graders, all third graders in novice. So that's kind of the subset that, that this is looking at. And then if you just look at the overall numbers, depending on whether you look at all students, students of color, you're saying forty to sixty percent of those students are still novice in eighth grade. In other words, from an intervention effort, if you look at all students, it's, it's, what, forty percent? But from an intervention effort, sort of huge opportunities there for improved intervention.
And I think we have...
Big numbers, big numbers.
We have to not mask, I'm, I'm caught, I'm going to your state. We have to not mask it just with the total. Because total percentage, I said mask a lot, because you look at those that are in the most need of service from our direct institutional inputs will be black African-American kids, low-income kids, several kids that we're leaving behind. So twenty-two percent is still masking it a little bit to me because of the large amount of kids that will make it no matter what, almost.
When you break out African-American kids, you're talking about a state of crisis. I mean, so some of the additional, the additional data that, that Aaron and Hannah have run, looking at, I think, over the last five years, the numbers and the percentages of African-American kids at the novice level, not only have we not made progress, we've lost ground. In some cases, more or bigger percentages of African-American kids at the novice level.
And that's where you have to look at it, in my opinion, if you want to make good public policy.
Ben?
One thing that I think is worth mentioning is, and I don't know how these percentages work out, but I'm sure that the great majority of the kids who are novices in the twelfth grade came into the system as novices. I think it's safe to say that. And one thing that's going to take a lot of money, even though it takes some other things too, is what I think is the only way we'll ever close the achievement gap, which is universal or near-universal early childcare. When, when a child comes into the system behind his peers, number one, the dumbest way you can spend a dollar is in remediation, and you're trying to, to remediate while you're doing other things with other kids. But it is cheaper to bring him up to the level of other kids interesting, entering school than to remedy it starting in first grade or kindergarten.
So that's one of those areas as, as well, Ben, where the conversation on early childhood education gets reduced to a funding one, right, lots of times. And, and it, like you're saying, is much more complex, too. One of the things that doesn't make it oftentimes in the political talking points is that we have too many kids in Kentucky who qualify for early childhood education at no cost, who are not in it. There are too many kids who already qualify for public preschool who are not in public preschool, who qualify for, for subsidized childcare who are not in it.
They qualify sort of at the four-and-a-half-year level. I think you're going to have to go deeper than that to start early childhood, and because that requires you to build a totally currently nonexistent infrastructure, that's going to take more money and more legitimate costs in terms of extra money than some of the other things we're talking about trying to solve with money.
That's right. It's, it's going to take all of that.
Kathy, and then we're going to have to, we're going to have to move on.
I, I guess I feel less than you do that it is a question of money, or you. California pays the most per student in the whole country, and they are fiftieth in the rankings. So to me, I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of taxpayers here. Because we're spending, I mean, as Chair of the Finance Committee, I'm looking at these numbers. And I'm looking at people who don't question the existing baseline budget at all. Four-point-one billion dollars. As a, and I'm coming from the private sector where every year you look at a budget and every year you question everything about the efficacy of the money that you are investing. We're not asking questions about whether or not existing programs are working. We're just asking for more money, assuming that they are. And there is no pressure coming from anywhere that I can tell that is holding this system accountable for good stewardship of the money. And I would also have to ask the question, if we're failing these kids, excuse me, from first through twelfth grade, where are we getting our sense that if we expand this system to include younger and younger kids, that we're going to do good by them as well? Whatever the structural reforms you're talking about, I think those are the questions that need to be focused on because the incentives are not right in any monopoly system. They are just not right. And I, I want to go on, you know, I'm, I'm coming from the private sector and I see the huge success of private schools. And what did they do in Florida recently, for example? They have cut costs quite significantly, and their performance is going up all over the place. So I don't really care to talk about more money. I care to talk about structural reform. And I, I, I don't know that we can do it through the legislative process because it has not served us well at all to, to date. And black kids are in crisis. I think it's time we did something more profound than simply ask for more money.
So, so what are we doing? I've been on this board for three years, and one consistent message has been an expression of shock and, and we're appalled at the achievement gap. And that conversation predates my service on the board here. It's been going on for years, yet we haven't moved the needle. In fact, as you pointed out, it's, in some cases, it's, we've, we've got, we've lost ground. Yet we hear this morning, it's criminal, it's a crisis, this is an emergency, but nothing has happened, you know? What, what can we do? There are practices out there that are working. There are pockets of success, as you pointed out. Why aren't we emulating them everywhere? Why, why aren't we taking effective steps to solve this problem that's been talked about and talked about and talked about for longer than I've been on the board?
Kathy talked about incentives, and I do think incentives are important. The other, the other side of that, that I think is important, that's lacking in our system, and we're advocating for this on a number of areas, is greater accountability. Is, is you can't, you can't have a system where you expect to make changes in these types of outcomes when next to nobody is actually held accountable for changes in the outcomes. You have to have greater accountability. I mean, you, you have a system currently where folks at the top are generally held accountable, right? And, I mean, I see Dr. Polio sitting there, so I'll use him as an example. Let's say test scores come out next year and they don't make the type of movement that, that we want to, we want to see in Jefferson County. Well, the media's going to go talk to Dr. Polio. And, and he's going to be, ask some, I think, some tough questions about, by his board. He's going to get some tough questions from the media. You should ask me tough questions if as a state, we don't make movement in terms of, and I know you will, in terms of raising achievement, in terms of closing gaps. But we have to, we have to, to do a better job of creating a system where there is accountability, not just at the top, where there is accountability for movement throughout the system. If, if there's no accountability, if the only thing you can do is change who's at the very top when you don't take the type of, make the type of movement or make the gains that you want to make, there's no way to, to, to ensure that you, you ever make movement.
And every year we wait is another year of young futures that are sacrificed. Another year of single-digit proficiency rate in, in two Jefferson County elementary schools that I know of, maybe more than that. What can we do?
Rich, I have a suggestion, suggestion at this point. So, so this is a, this is an iceberg-type topic. You know, the Commissioner, I think, has, has talked to us about the, the top part of the iceberg, but it is, it is huge. I mean, this predates CARA. This is a multiple-decade problem. It's a, I agree, the comments, it's a, it's a crisis. It's a special crisis for the kids and for the state. I mean, at a time that, you know, it's all about, you know, economic security for the individual and for the state is acquiring skills in a, in a workforce that's increasingly technical. I think it demands a response. One thing, maybe an internal board business, later on in the meeting, we can talk about the possibility of a special session, special meeting focused on this topic. Maybe, you know, maybe a few weeks, maybe a month from now or something, but have a chance to talk with the Commissioner about that as well. But this is a, this is maybe the, the primary, this achievement gap that's been talked about year after year and almost no movement. You know, something has, you know, something has to be done. Not that people aren't, we're not working in that direction, but kind of what's the big, you know, what's the, the big crisis response to the spot we find ourselves in today? I don't think we're going to be able to solve it, you know, in the next, whatever time we allocate to this. So why don't we think about that? And, and maybe later on in the meeting, let's talk about, maybe a time to get together to focus on this topic, if that would work.
Sure, yeah.
All right, all right. Thank you for your, thank you for your report. All right, next item, Superintendent Polio, we have update on Jefferson County Public Schools. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you very much. Proud to be here. Don't think I picked the best time on the agenda to sit up here, but it's all right.
Primed, it's a primed board, yeah.
All right.
Hey, you're the fixer.
That's right, that's right. So, and also glad to come here today, a little bit shorter drive than the April meeting, but was proud to be there as well. So, good news is, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the progress we've made this year, and I think it's going to at least move us, have us showing that Arrow's heading in the right direction throughout this year and the work that we're doing. I want to reiterate that all of this work, I think the difficult part of it, everyone in education wants one lever to pull, one thing to do, to have these massive changes and outcome changes that we're talking about. And it really takes sustained systemic work over a period of time and continuing that day after day, year after year, to make these changes. And all too often in education, you know, I don't know if we always have the fortitude and there's a lot of changes, whether it's at the top or other places, that don't lend itself to that continued sustained work. And so that's what we're trying to do today. I wanted to give you a little bit of a thirty-thousand-foot overview of where we are on the corrective action plan. This is the fifth time that I've presented to you on our corrective action plan, beginning last October. We finished the school year this Friday, and so we will be really finishing our first school year under the corrective action plan. We'll go into next year as year two. We started in December, so this is the fourth meeting where we were going through each area of our corrective action plan. And so as you can see, today, we will be doing planning, which fits in very well with the discussion that you just had. And then some things around finance at the district level. In the August meeting, you can see our last two areas out of the ten that I will be talking about. Will be finance at the school level and safe crisis management, which will bring us going through all ten at your board meetings. We would then begin in October, circling back again and giving you updates about where we are. And so this reminder, as we head into the fall, we will be one year away from our second audit, or the review that the KDE will be doing as we move forward. Just to give you an idea of our status update of those actions from our, that have been established and those that are developing, we're up to forty-three percent of our actions are established. As we close out, you know, in, in about three or four months, we'll be one year into implementation of this corrective action plan. So we feel positive about where we're going. We have a lot of discussion about when we move things to established and... We have a lot of discussion about when we move things to established and when they are developing. And most of these really involve implementing systems work where we are ensuring that the implementation and compliance of the work that we are doing is happening at 156 schools and central office locations. So in order to move it to established, we have to make sure that the system has clearly been established, we are providing oversight of that system and support and training to those that need it, in a very large system. So we're being very intentional about when we move something from developing to established to making sure that it's successful and where we want it to be. But 43%, and you can see each area where we are, to make sure of that, we're feeling very positive about most of the areas and the development that we're working on, as I told you last time. Our biggest lift moving forward will be with IDEA and ensuring that that difficult work and we make sure that we're doing that successfully for all 13,000 of our special education students in JCPS at 156 school locations. This gives you how we've progressed in each meeting from December of 18 through June of 19, so you can see the progression, the percentage and how far we have to go. But as you can see, we feel that we are moving forward very well. We will be doing a significant amount of training with staff in all of these areas over the summer. The summer provides us that opportunity where we've established systems to really provide this training moving forward into 1920, and we think we will see accelerated pace moving to established once we get into the 1920 school year. So I'm looking forward to bringing you that. So first of all, with planning, and really planning is around instructional systems. And I think it really fits in with what Commissioner Lewis talked about, which is changing the systems and the way we do things. If you read the audit report from the spring of 2017, and what I have found stepping into the role is, I think, all too often, when it came to instructional planning, we had no clear vision or what I call a north star around instruction from our district that would be reflected in all 156 schools. And so I've often said, what we had too often was 156 independent contractors at the school level, or a district of schools instead of a school district. And then when that happens, you are at the mercy of having a highly effective principal to make sure that you are moving forward. And we have a great group of principals, but clearly we have to have systems in place, we have to have supports for those systems, and we have to have oversight and accountability to make sure they are happening in every single school. The challenge when it comes to system work at schools is this, you know, we are not like, when you have 156 schools and you are a school district, it is not necessarily like, and I say this often, a McDonald's or a Starbucks, where you would walk in a Starbucks and see the same menu, no matter where you go, and the same type of service. But we have to make sure in schools that we provide that north star, the systems expectations, the non-negotiables of what we expect in every single school, and then allow schools to develop that and mold that to meet their individual school culture. That's the work we're doing. We want to ensure that every single student in JCPS, no matter what school they go to, no matter what zip code they live in, that they have these effective systems in every single school. So you can see our challenges, I mean, we've had pockets of excellence throughout JCPS, I think that's been found many times, but having consistency in implementation, having a clear communication plan, where we are communicating that mission, that vision, our strategic plan, that north star on a regular basis, so all of our stakeholders can communicate clearly what should be happening in every single school, and then having effective monitoring systems, so that we are monitoring effectively what's happening in every single school and making changes when necessary, providing supports, but responding to those times when we don't think those systems are effective in every single school. And so the diagram to the right, as you can see, for the first time ever, we've really implemented systems work at school. I can't say enough how important I believe strong systems are at the school and the district level. Because what we know is that when things get very busy in the school and everyone starts off the school year with the intentions of mind of doing these effective activities, but if it's not a system, when challenging things happens at school, when things get busy and hectic, then those things don't happen. Systems happen all the time, every day, whether the leader is present or not, and that's when I usually say effective systems. So those are our six systems that we have implemented, that the expectation is that it will be at every single school in JCPS. We have now what we consider to be non-negotiables in each and every school, that we can walk in and clearly say, and I use this term, they are like factory settings on your phone, that that is an automatic and you can add additional things to your cellphone, like apps and ringtones and all the other things, but we know the foundation of our system work are those factory settings, are those non-negotiables. So we've really developed that, we're training that, we're working that, and I think we are seeing positive signs as a result of that. We have reflections from every school each week. We have what we call vital signs check, which are our principals, our assistant superintendents coming in and having very strong conversations around specific data points, because we believe in data monitoring, and that's where the rubber meets the road. And so that's what we've done this year and we're seeing better results of it. And you can see map assessment three times a year, K through 11. So we are assessing about 90,000 students three times a year in reading and math, that focus on their proficiency level or their grade level and their growth, which is just as important. So when we have students behind, as you all just talked about, that's not an easy challenge to get someone back up to grade level, but you have to make sure they're not only making the expected growth, which is 50% one year of growth in a calendar year, that will still keep them behind. We have to have more than one year's growth. And so monitoring that and providing those interventions have been extremely important. I've talked to you about our pillars that have to be reflected in every single school. Backpack of success skills, we've talked about that several times. Racial equity, a real focus on that achievement gap and disproportionality and making very intentional changes to the way we do things, so that we just don't talk about the achievement gap, but we're very intentional about changing it. And then having a clear focus on culture and climate in every school, which to me is providing the supports that our kids need to be successful. For example, we know that in an urban school district, about 25% of the kids, research shows, have some type of mental health need, and we need to meet those students and make sure that they have that support that they need. We're providing that in the 1920 school year. Brief update on the backpack of success skills, which I think is about that north star and planning. You can see we've had about 850,000 artifacts where kids have put in their individual success skill folders, as you can see down below, those are our success skills. These are the artifacts that kids are putting in. We were, there were a lot of people that were skeptical that by the end of the year, that we could get all of our fifth graders, eighth graders and 12th graders to do a defense of their readiness, using their math and their abilities in math and reading and growth and also in each of the success skills. We have 21,000 fifth, eighth and 12th graders, and I think in the first couple days of this week, we've exceeded 20,000 defenses, students standing up and giving their defense of their readiness. So we're right there, getting at that number, and our goal was to be well over 95% of our students, which we're going to meet that. And we think this is translating into improvements in math and reading, as I'll show you. This is students, percent of our students meeting benchmarks in reading and math. And I want to be clear, this is just from the fall, which was in September when our kids took this, that's the blue bar. The red bar in the, in the middle is the winter map assessment, the green is the spring assessment. So from September to April, you can see achievement and growth, so you want to be above 50% in order to be gaining more than one year in that individual school year. But we are proud of that growth. So in reading alone, 2% growth, and as you can see, in math and achievement is, it was close to a 3% growth. And if we continue that progress, we will see substantial change. So in JCPS, that's over 2,000 students in reading who got to that benchmark level from fall to spring, and nearly 3,000 more in math. So there's still a lot of work to be done, I don't want to, I want to underscore that. Still a lot of work to be done, but we're proud of that progress. And specifically in growth, and this is so important, that this is the first time that we have had all of our student groups above that 50% growth, and we're going to continue to monitor that to make sure that we make up that ground when students are behind. Also, transition readiness, as we've talked about, is an important indicator. You all have talked about that a great deal of time, that whether that be the ACT benchmarks, whether that be college credit, or whether that be an industry certification, that number 50, so the far left is the end of the 17, 18 school year, 48.8%. That 53.4% was last week. Our high schools, I think we're one of the few districts that's still in session, but that's all right, we're still working as we speak. But our high schools are continuing to work on this and get to this, and we're confident we're going to have about a 7% jump in senior transition readiness from last year to this year. So indicators are very positive around planning in this data. We think this system work is making a difference, and I want to use some terms from advanced ed. This year was an implementation year for us. Our schools and principals struggled for the first time with having expectations around systems and pillars, and so that was difficult, tough work. We have assured our principals, as we move into year two, we are not adding new things, what we are expecting is moving from implementation to impact. So we expect this data to even improve more as we move forward as a result of this work. I also briefly wanted to highlight, we had an advanced ed district accreditation visit in January, late January, which also served as our KDE diagnostic review. I won't read this to you, so there's some challenges that clearly we still have to address in this, but saw some very positive things out of the visit. You know, there is what's called an index of education quality, and I won't read that to you, but we were very proud of that score. All of our standards either met or exceeded the expectations and leadership and resource capacity, and what we were most proud of is our observation ratings exceeded each of the past three years, met or exceeded each of the past three years' diagnostic reviews. So very positive, you can see a couple of successes there, strong indications of system commitment, reorganization of healthy, positive culture for climate shift, culture of hope and promise are emerging in JCPS. Our continued challenges, which I just said, implement with fidelity these initiatives. So this was the implementation year. Now we really have to move with fidelity on all classroom practices and continue to monitor and hold our schools accountable to make sure that they are implemented at every single level, which we're continuing to do. So finance, I'll be brief on finance. A lot of this is compliance work that we have to ensure, compliance is happening at district level and our school levels. And so, you know, some of those challenges continue to be opportunity for our board and public review, giving plenty of opportunities for that. Ensuring that our SBDM councils are truly reviewing the budgets and are not that rubber stamp, but essentially having those true conversations around the programs at a school, are they being effective? Do we want to continue to support these financially, or do we want to make different decisions? That's the true purpose of SBDMs and making sure that is happening in compliance at every school site. Some of our improvement strategies, as you can see, we're going to have more board work sessions coming up for our board members, public meetings for the public to really give us input around where we should be funding specific programs, monitor and support our SBDM councils. So all of this is around compliance and ensuring that we're providing that oversight when it comes to compliance, but also the support. So not just necessarily being the hammer, but making sure that everybody has what they need to be successful, the training and those type of things. And then ongoing and targeted professional development, and good quality professional development. So we can give professional development when it comes to Red Book and policies around finance at the school level and at the district level, but if it's not good quality professional development, it's not going to make a difference. So in all of these areas, we're not only providing professional development, we're really evaluating, is it the right professional development? Is it differentiated? So principals need to have a different type of professional development than maybe a teacher or a bookkeeper, and making sure that they have the professional development to monitor the systems in their schools. So we're really working through that, too. Summary of evidence, you can see we've had over 100 school-level checks on finance areas. We're really doing a lot of internal review to make sure we're being successful, checking every single SBDM council meeting to make sure that they have accurate minutes to reflect these conversations. And so less than 2% did not include that, bud, so 98 did. So we're working on those 2% that we didn't, and that's what we have to make sure, that it's 100%. We've gone through, and a part of our work was modifying every job description to incorporate training and compliance. That's thousands of job descriptions, but we're making sure that's a part of everyone's job review and evaluation, that they know what training and compliance they have to have. And then as with all of these, a business continuity plan for our critical operations. So a lot of moving parts and a lot of work, I can assure you this, as we get into, through one cycle of the cap, every single week, me and my team review at least one to two areas on the cap, get updates, bring in additional people to make sure that we are moving forward with this work. So we clearly have our eye on all of these compliance things, while most importantly focusing on our instructional systems at every school. So that concludes my report for this month, and I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that you have.
Dr. Polio, going back to page nine, the growth benchmarks by group, this, it's great to see the growth happening, but it appears the gap between white and African-Americans actually grew from fall to spring.
So winter, we had that growth, once again, that we reduced that, but, and I think, you know, that is a challenge when you have any type, and I'll use the word treatment for a system, or any type of implementation of a system for all students, is ensuring that there is, that if all, if everyone grows at the same rate, or one grows more, that achievement gap stays the same or even extends itself. So we had that positive in winter, that's one of our reflections to spring. We're proud of obviously the growth, especially in math with 52, but that is really, has to focus on our equity work, which is specific treatment intervention systems work when it comes to African-American students. So we definitely have work to continue to do on that.
You expect that gap to close, not by bringing the top down, but by bringing the bottom up?
I do, but once again, that is, that is very challenging work. So that systems work that I talk about is for all students, and as you can see, it's having major impact on all students in JCPS, but we have to do additional work that focuses specifically on African-American students. We have some other gaps, too, that we focus on, free and reduced lunch, special education, a few other areas. So we have a racial equity policy that focuses specifically on race, but we clearly have our eye on all of those gaps.
Dr. Polio, question, heard a report of your reorganization of central staff, which would have moved dollars from central office into the classroom, maybe supported teachers' expenses, I don't, whatever, more instruction. But I also heard, and maybe incorrectly, but while you're here, needed to ask you, that your board only supported about 60% of your effort, and then about maybe $6 million was left on the table that couldn't go to the classroom, that you had proposed. Could you kind of clear that up? I mean, is the board joining with you in this effort to improve, put more dollars in the classroom?
Yes, we had some, obviously some tough conversations and a tough couple of weeks around reorganization, and there were a lot of questions around it. We had to have some, some of those proposals. I think our board wanted further study before making those decisions, which we are doing. That doesn't mean that they are necessarily not going to be brought back to them. Our biggest change, and which I've talked about- Our biggest change, and which I've talked about before, when it comes to getting our funds from central office to the classroom, are around several major structural changes. So pay scale, the amount of days worked, and so I've said this several times, that when you're in a school system, in most districts around the Commonwealth, you don't have a whole lot that are working 260 days. So like most school-based employees, principals, teachers work, for instance, I believe 185 days or 192. Principals might work 220. In most districts, you just have the very top leadership working 260 days. And so, bringing a proposal back that would change the amount of, you know, new employees to central office that'll be working less than 260 days, and changing that structural pay scale, will be where the major changes are made, and the substantial repurposing of funds back to schools will happen. That's coming to our board in the next couple of board meetings. So that will make the major change. But having said that, I am doing that further study and bringing some of that back to our board in future months.
If you would, the next time you join with us, if you would give us an update on that, we're kind of looking at, or I'm interested in, you know, sort of level of board support for your initiatives.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just curious, this quick question, with regards to the restructuring you've done at central office, did that include, since you've had and continue to have, per my understanding, a problem of having teacher shortage, does that include moving some of that administrative staff back to an instructional classroom? Was that part of that restructuring?
Yeah, what we found a lot was when we had, when we brought in our own, the council of the great city schools, to do a review of our structure, what we found was, yes, we had shortages, but that we also had more certified staff that might even be placed in schools that weren't in instructional positions. So some of it is central office, yes, but some of it is also making sure that we're maximizing in all of our schools, the staff that are certified teachers that might not have students. So we made some changes to that. We're going to continue to review that into the coming budget cycle. And those are some of the tough changes we have to look at. And so, the difficult part of that is, they clearly can be providing interventions and supports to students that might not be, they might not be specifically classroom teachers, but we have to make sure that we are maximizing the use of all of our certified staff. So it's a struggle that we continue with, that most large districts, and I think even smaller districts do, which is staffing their classrooms. And I think the commissioner spoke about that in his report. And so, a big part of our reorganization that happened was around human resources. Human resources has been a common complaint around JCPS for many years, and one that I was tasked with when I took the job. And so, we believe we have created a structure that is going to support our schools better and really be innovative in making sure that we're bringing in certified staff into the right spots and doing that the right way. So still some tough work ahead of us. It's nowhere near complete of what we need to do.
Thank you.
Question. How does it look for this school year, I mean, for its teachers for next year? Have you got your, are we going to have any teachers lacking for the classrooms? I think last year you started with like 150 something.
That's correct.
So how do we look for the next year?
So we are working diligently right now to make sure that we fill every classroom, and that's our goal. So we think we're on track to do that. It's tough to say at this, at this point, what that's going to look like. So a balance for us, for instance, is with our corrective action plan, one of the steps we took that I reported last time around IDEA and special ed was having a, what we call an implementation coach, or a special ed director, so to speak, I'm using the term director loosely, not an official term, at every single school to ensure arc meetings are done with compliant, paperwork is done, data is collected at every single school level. The difficult part doing that is when you hire those positions, as I said before, that is many times removing them from a classroom position. So it will continue to be, I think, our challenge, special ed teachers will continue to be our challenge, to make sure we fill all of those positions. But we are working with our university partners pretty diligently to make sure we get there.
Thank you. All right, we've run out of time, maybe questions, but thank you, Dr. Polio, for joining us here today.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, our next item is the heroic educator awards. Commissioner?
Ladies and gentlemen, I have the privilege and honor of introducing a special guest with us today, who is going to present awards. So with us today, we have Governor Bevin. Governor Bevin has consistently throughout my time at KDE, said to us, and even during my time at the Education and Workforce Cabinet, that he wants us doing everything we possibly can do, and to do it faster, to ensure that each and every kid in the Commonwealth has access to the types of learning opportunities that, that, that their more affluent typically peers have access to. And so, I'm thankful for his support, thankful for all that he's done in terms of his leadership here at KDE, and I have the pleasure of giving you our governor, Governor Matt Bevin.
Hey. Thank you for all that you do and your deliberations. And I'm just so excited to meet the two of you all in person and to be able to honor you in this way. But I want to thank those of you who also took time to be here. You're here for different reasons. Some of you are here as a matter of course, for normal deliberations in Board of Education meetings. Some are here specifically to help me honor a couple of heroic members of the education community. And I don't know, is Zoe here as well? There you are. Oh, awesome. Hey, that's great. I've got something for you as well. But I just want to thank each and every one of you who care enough about the educational process. It is true, I do think that, in fact, I know, we can constantly be finding better ways at the end of the day to help educate young people. At the end of the day, all of this is about that. It's about educating their minds. But additionally, we also want to make sure that they're safe. We also want to make sure that they are protected when they are in the care of the education system. And indeed, Michelle, I know you have some thoughts about that as it relates to all bus drivers, and I'll touch on that in a moment. But there was an instance that I'm sure you're aware of in Bullock County, where there was a young woman who found herself in some physical distress. She had an aneurysm, a little aortic aneurysm. They're frankly more common than people would know, but the particular type that she had, even though she was 12 years old, is often fatal. And amazingly, she had, in, Michelle, the most extraordinary bus driver that you could possibly have. And the fact that you were skilled, the fact that you were prepared, the fact that you were ready to step up and take action. No one ever really wants to be laying down on the floor of a bus if they can help it. But under the right circumstances, how perfect that ended up being as a place for you to be able to begin administering lifesaving CPR, and to just respond and not to panic. For the other teachers, I don't know who they were, that helped to then get other students off of the bus, but then for the assistant principal, Kyle Biggie, to step up as you did as well, and to help in that regard. I just wanted to acknowledge you. I know that Commissioner Lewis sent you letters of commendation shortly after that time, but I wanted to do something additional as well. There's nothing that we could say or do that even begins to approximate the value of saving a young life. And I just look at how beautiful your smile is, and it just, it's amazing. Are your parents here? Your grandmother's here? Awesome. I mean, what a, what a joy, what a joy to have her here with us. I'm a little partial to young girls, I have six daughters, so I'm very partial to folks like you. My youngest is now 14, though. But in recognition of your service as a bus driver, your service as the assistant principal, I want to bestow upon you the honorary title of being Kentucky colonels. So now you will be, you'll be elevated. Now, don't be trying to, now she'll be, you know, I might call you up to active duty at some point, so don't. But I want to honor you real quickly, if I could, and we'll start here with, I'm going to start with you, Michelle, if I could. For Michelle Crenshaw, the bus driver who saved young Zoe Thomas's life, I want to present you with this, and give her a round of applause. Thank you very much. I tell you, there was, there was a fellow named Harland Sanders, who this was the only Colonel he was, and he did pretty well with it. So it gives you a lot of potential. And Kyle Biggie, if you could step up here as well, this gentleman really stepped up additionally and helped to save young Zoe's life. And I tell you, when you become an administrator, or a teacher, or anybody, or a bus driver, you never imagine that this is what you'll find yourself doing. But thank you as well, and congratulations. I want to say, thank you very much. I want to say one thing real quickly. I know Michelle has a belief, and I share it, that every single bus driver should have CPR training. The odds of that skill having to be used are very small on the school bus. And yet, in an instance like this, had this been a different bus with a different bus driver, we might have had a very, very different result, almost certainly would have. This is something that's easily done. It's something we've now begun to require of high school students as a part of their training, something that I have been a big believer in. I first got CPR training when I was about 15 or 16 years old, I think I was 16, through the Red Cross. And I'll tell you, it's something you just never know. A friend of mine who became a certified CPR through the Red Cross has saved two lives now in this way in his life. Now, most people will get training and never save a life, but what a wonderful skill to have. And I, I'm going to work with you, and we'll find a legislator to bring this forward, and it may be something we can even do through this board that doesn't even require legislation. It may be just something that we can do regulatorily, but it's the type of thing that really should be done. It doesn't require a ton, and here's the wonderful thing, what a wonderful skill outside of even the routes that you're running, to be able to take into the community and into life, into your own family, into your own homes. So to be certified CPR folks, I think, is something that's certainly worthy of consideration, and you will get full credit for this when it happens, because I know we can make it happen. I have one other thing for each of you, and then I have the same thing for Zoe as well. So Zoe, if you could come up here, let's give you a second. There you go. And Zoe, I saw a comment where you said that you are now connected to Ms. Crenshaw in a special way for life, and you really are. And I want to give you a little something, this is a small coin, it's a challenge coin it's called. It has, united we stand, divided we fall, and that has special significance and meaning for the two of you as well. It's very good to meet you, it really is. Thank you very much. Billy, God bless you. Thank you for letting me interrupt you a little bit here. Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
How nice.
Awesome. I don't know about the rest of the board, but I need a minute or two just for the chills to subside, hearing again of your efforts. Thank you. Might actually be a, let's see here. Tell you what, why don't we, why don't we take a five-minute break? Okay, we've got a couple hours here, and let's try to hold it to five minutes if we could, and just kind of in and out, because we do have a packed agenda. Thank you, so we're, we're in recess.
Okay, we're back in, back in session. Next item on our agenda is the performance management update by Chief Performance Officer, Karen Dodd.
Good morning.
Hello, Karen.
Well, this will be very anticlimactic compared to what we just experienced. But I do want to share with you some of the results that we've been collecting as it pertains to our strategic plan. Today, as you know, in our strategic plan, we have three strategic priorities. Those are around student outcomes, strategic partnerships, and operational excellence. Today, I'm going to focus on operational excellence, and I'm going to keep this pretty short. But we do have six targets that we are shooting for when it comes to operational excellence. Those are maintain, maintain, I'm sorry, no, improve overall customer satisfaction, improve external communication, improve internal communication, increase strategic maturity level, improve leadership effectiveness, and improve the quality of skills and expertise of the KDE staff. So what we're going to look at today are the results of the, some of the surveys that we have employed to get to the results of some of these. So specifically, we have done a KDE survey to survey the employees here at the department. We've also done a customer satisfaction survey to get to more of those results. And then, we do a survey to look at how we're doing towards strategic maturity. So I'm going to start off with the KDE employee survey. Of the approximately 588 employees, over 343, we had 343 respondents that completed the survey, so that's about a 58% response rate, which is actually very good for a survey response rate. Looking then at the results, so there were multiple questions under each of these domains, those domains being leadership, communication, skills, and then culture and climate. You can see that the first one in gray there is from the survey that we did back in February, nope, sorry, back in November. The second one in blue is in February of this year. So we have shown improvement in all areas. Leadership went from 70.5 to 78.9. Communication from 73.5 to 90, 79.8. And skills, that's the employee skills and expertise, went from 84.5 to 90.1. We are also looking at culture and climate, so that's 75.3, and it went up to 81%. So we're very happy with those results so far. Overall, it shows that satisfaction has increased from one deployment of the survey to the next. Each of the four domains improved by more than five percentage points. Employees seem to be most satisfied with their own level of knowledge, technical skills, and ability to measure their work, and the domain needing the most improvement is around Moving on to the customer survey, this one we send out to superintendents, and we ask that they then pass it on to their district staff, school principals, and school staff. So we don't know exactly how many people actually receive the survey, but we do know that 760 customers responded to the April survey, and that is up from the 493 that responded in November. The domains that we're looking at here are communication, leadership, and service. And again, all areas went up. Back in November, the overall customer satisfaction rate was 46.8, and in April, it went up to 51%. So communications went from 47 to 51.4, leadership 50.3 to 54.1, service from 43.9 to 48.2. Again, some of our key findings, I'm not going to read all of that to you, but basically, we saw greater satisfaction with KDE's communication. Respondents were generally more satisfied with the use of communication tools and the quality of communication, and they were less satisfied with the two-way communication. Under leadership, and that was all under communication, sorry, leadership, KDE's work in setting standards... Leadership, KDE's work in setting standards received relatively higher levels of satisfaction. Where areas such as collaboration and addressing educational issues in the state were rated the lowest. Student support staff most frequently registered the highest levels of satisfaction with KDE's leadership, while teachers and principals were most frequently saw the lowest satisfaction rates. And then in the service area, respondents generally had a positive opinion of KDE staff, but most respondents were not satisfied with the work KDE produces or the quality of service provided. Principals and student support staff most frequently showed the highest levels of satisfaction with KDE service, where teachers and superintendents showed the lowest satisfaction rates. Moving on then to our strategic management maturity model. This is a model, and I've talked about this before, where we're looking at all these domains that you see down the left-hand side, and it's in a matrix format. So, on a scale of one to five, what's the maturity rating? I think we talked about Baldridge being another form that, that you can use to measure maturity. And so, we just sent out a survey with each of those maturity levels, and we asked staff, where on this maturity level in each of these domains do you feel that we are rating? So, back in October, we did the first deployment of that for an overall rating of 2.6, which put us at that reactive level. So, overall, as an organization, employees felt that we were more reactive to, to issues that come up. When we retook it in March of this year, our overall average was at a 3.2, which moves us up to the level of structured and proactive. You can see here that we had quite a jump in every one of the domains. Our key findings. Broad movement from Level 2 to Level 3. All domains saw score increases of similar magnitude. Leadership continued to score the highest, which is really interesting. And then the employee survey, we saw that leadership was the lowest. But when we actually have a, a matrix saying what leadership should look like, it's actually where we rate the highest. So, I found that to be rather interesting. And then the reorg may have impacted the initial results. When we first did the, the survey, we were just going through. People were literally just changing seats and changing jobs. So, we do feel that the big jump that we see may be that, that people rated us lower. I say us, rated the maturity level lower just because of the uncertainty of what all was going on. So, there could be just a natural jump from that. All right. I know I went through that really fast. Do you all have any questions?
I was just wondering, you know, when you got the survey, or sent the surveys out, were there opportunities for people to give specific comments or feedback? And if so, can we see those?
I do have specific feedback. At the first survey that we did around, for the employees, under each domain, we asked if they had any additional comments in that particular domain. So, we did get quite a bit back from that. The second round that we did, we did not ask for that. We intend to do that on an annual basis. So, we do have feedback that we will collect annually, as you're speaking of. We did the same thing for, for customers. We asked, there might have just been one question at the very end. Do you have anything that you'd like to add? And we, I do have that as well. So, yeah, I can share that.
It'd be good to see year to year how it's improving or getting worse, so we would know if there were areas that we needed to make changes in.
Exactly.
Big move. Especially in management maturity.
Yeah.
Would you characterize that?
Oh, yeah. Going from a Level 2 to a Level 3 is always a big deal. I shared with Dr. Lewis. I don't know, if we were to actually apply for a Baldridge Award, I don't know that we would be at a Level 3 yet. I think it's exciting that the perception here at the department is that we are, we are gaining ground. Because we are doing some very intentional things to do that. We're providing more continuous improvement training to our employees. We're having more communication with Dr. Lewis, doing monthly all-employee meetings. He's having brown bag lunches. So, we're doing some very intentional things to make this move. We're, we're talking about our values. We're talking about the strategic priorities. Dr. Lewis has been doing a great job with all of that. And I, I think that it, it shows in these numbers that it is making a difference, and people are, are feeling more confident in the work that they're doing, and that what they're doing is making a difference for kids.
Karen, what, what will happen next with, with the survey data? Especially, I'm most curious about the customer survey. I'm happy to see the progress that we made from November to April. But it's still concerning that just barely over half of the customer respondents agreed or strongly agreed with the items. And so, I'd be just really curious to know what the general concerns are there? And if, you know, is, is there a problem with customer expectations of what the department can and is able to actually do? Or, or are there specific concerns about the services that we're providing? All of those kinds of things, I assume, staff are looking at and trying to figure out how to respond to.
My next step is to take this to the, we, we have a strategic management team that meets monthly. So, we need to have a discussion there as to what we really want to focus on. Looking at all of those results, what do we want to focus on? We need to put an action plan in place for that. We also need to set a goal. Where do we think we should be? And in order to do that, we needed to collect some of this baseline data, as you know. I also want to look at comparative data. One thing, we've asked our partners from the RALE Appalachia to see, are there other SEAs who are collecting this kind of data? And no one is.
I don't know of one.
Yeah. They have not found any. So, I asked them to look at government in general. They are able to collect some information on customer satisfaction for government in general. So, we're gonna use that as a comparison. I haven't gotten those numbers yet. But I think it's important that we see what else is out there comparatively, so that we can set realistic goals.
I think it was interesting, too, from, you know, to follow up to, to Gary's comment, the, the district level satisfaction was higher than the school level satisfaction. So, is that a communication problem between district office and the end school? Or is that our communication issue? You know, who, who's impacting that, that variance?
I wanted to give a little, a little bit of context on that as well. And, and my data is anecdotal from, you know, being out and having conversations with folks. I think there's, there are lots of, there are lots of factors. So, one, in our strategic, strategic leadership meetings, our strategic management teams, the approaches that we adopt at the department level, they, they are department-wide. But then, our associate commissioners and our chiefs within their offices and within their, their departments are also being more specific around their, their, their areas, their realms, to, to take a look at what the feedback says and how they want to approach it. In terms of why the customer satisfaction looks the way it does, I think it's sum of everything. I think it, it ranges from challenges with timeliness to, to being responsive in, in, in key areas. It also includes lots of miscommunication and misperception. Routinely, when I'm, I'm traveling the state, one of the things, Jessica and I talk about this a whole lot. I think we could do a whole lot better. You know, folks are, folks get upset with us about a lot of stuff. There's a lot of stuff folks get upset with us about, actually, that we haven't done. I think we, we have, we have a communication challenge with that, especially getting down to the school level. Because our communication, most of it, is at the district level. Example would be high school graduation requirements. There are lots of principals who give me feedback when I'm around that. And I think some of you were even on a visit where we talked about it, where a principal was upset about something with high school graduation requirements that wasn't in it. The, the other, the other challenge for us is there's not always clear understanding of what KDE has control over and what KDE doesn't have control over. And so, there, there's oftentimes, you know, legitimately, folks that are upset or dissatisfied with a rule, or regulation, or a statute, without really understanding that that's not something KDE can change. Or that KDE doesn't have additional funding to, to give you to support something. So, it, it really is across the board. But we want to get that data, because the things that we do have control over, that we can improve, and there are some of those areas, we want to target resources and, and strategies to, to make improvement there.
I think that goes back to this morning, one NHCR conversation we had extensively with regards to budget and all that. You know, there's still, there's still a lot of, I think, clarification needs to be made for us to understand what exactly we can control as a board. It's the board, the department versus what's controlled at that district level. Because I still think there's a lot of confusion on, outside of this room.
Well, and if there's that dissatisfaction, too, it is important that they note that at the end, and maybe talk about it. And that way, it would give you clarification of, yes, we do have control over this, or no, we don't.
Karen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. Our next topic is the Commissioner's recommendation to designate the Menifee County School District for State Assistance. And I'll have Dr. Lewis, Associate Commissioner Kelly Foster, and Associate Commissioner Robin Kenny.
Ladies and gentlemen, I will, just by way of introduction, say that, that my recommendation, based on the audit conducted in the fall/winter of 2018, is that Menifee County Schools be moved from state management to a state-assisted district. By way of introduction, the, the statute is clear. The, the criteria for state management in statute is actually the same as the criteria for, for state, for state assistance. That is a pattern of, of ineffectiveness, pattern of inefficiency in the district. Menifee County Schools continues to exhibit those patterns. There continue to be significant challenges in Menifee County Schools, as documented in the audit. With that said, the district has made significant gains. There's been an incredible amount of capacity building at the board level. There's been an incredible amount of capacity building at the district level, capped off by the recent hiring of a superintendent in Menifee County Schools for the first time in, no.
Since 2015.
Since 2015. Recently hired Tim Spencer, who previously served as state manager, to become the state, the superintendent of Menifee County Schools. That transition in leadership, I believe, is critical to them moving from a state-managed to a state-assisted district. And I emphasize the, the capacity building that's happened at the board level and the state level, because the key difference between being a state-managed and a state-assisted district is with state assistance, the local superintendent and the local Board of Education regain their authority. That's the key difference. And so, the pattern of inefficiency, of ineffectiveness continues to be there. But the capacity, capacity building, we believe, is such that there can be that transition from authority here at the Department of Education shifting to the, the local level. So, I will turn it over to, to my colleagues, Dr. Foster and Ms. Kenny.
Good morning. And I just reiterate everything that Dr. Lewis says. You know, I've worked closely with Menifee County since they went into state assistance in December of 2014. I have, I personally interviewed all their board members during the management audit. And I worked with their local board chair through the process of hiring a superintendent. And, you know, the biggest difference, or the difference between management and assistance is that local board having capacity to lead that district. So, we are very pleased with the capacity that has been built in Menifee County Board of Education, with the hiring of Tim Spencer effective July 1 as the superintendent. And we'll continue to support them through the state assistance process. They still have many areas to improve on. As you saw in the audit, we still have some concerns with quality curriculum instruction, with special education, with just some compliance issues. But the other piece, I think, that's worth noting, not only is the capacity that's been built in that board, but the financial situation that they're in today compared to where they were when they went in state assistance in December of 2014. It's, it's miraculous. It's amazing. That has happened under state manager Tim Spencer's leadership and the decisions that that local board made as an advisory board. Not to mention the fact that, and then I'll let Robin speak to it, because she is much more well-versed in that area.
The fact that they were able to pass that.
Local nickel and have, you know, started building a new K8 building for their local community is, is amazing. Robin, anything you want to say on finances?
Yeah, I think from the capacity side, not only the strong leadership of Tim Spencer, but the other really strong leader that we work with in my office is their finance officer, Lori Bartley. And Lori has been there, I think this is her third year, and she, she is fabulous. She's rolled up her sleeves, and she's worked really hard with the guidance and direction. And so, I think having a strong financial officer there in the district has really helped them a lot. They've also had some other changes in their operational areas. We've looked at their food service area. They've, they've hired additional staff to have those people onsite at each location, so they can really be the eyes and ears at the schools. And pupil transportation, doing good work in that area. So, all their operational areas, we're seeing growth and capacity being built. And as Kelly and Dr. Lewis have said, you know, the thing is, you have to have the right people in there and exhibiting the right skills to really sustain. And that's what we want. We want to sustain those good efforts. There's still areas of improvement. The building itself is remarkable that we're on the way, you know, for Menifee to have a new elementary school. We, I think they are scheduled to sell bonds on June 18th. So, that is, that is moving forward quickly. It's a very exciting time for Menifee. But that could only have happened with the passage of that nickel that they did. And that took great courage on their board to get that done. So, we think by, by continuing state assistance, that allows us to continue with these people that are, that are in fairly new positions. And there is still some operational improvements, just like in any other district. And I think they would benefit from us kind still being available in this state-assisted capacity.
Right. Questions? Kathy?
First of all, thank you very much. I think this is such nice reporting. And I especially appreciate that you put how much it costs. I, I really like knowing what we do and what it costs us. And what you had said is that it's approximately $500,000 annually in staffing-related costs. Is that management or assistance?
So, that has been what we have been spending up to this point, looking at a state manager's salary. And then we also have some education recovery staff that are over, that are currently assigned to that district that's working at the district level and in their CSI school. So, as we transition from management to assistance, that, that cost may go down. When Tim Spencer becomes a superintendent July 1, the district will be picking up his salary. So, we will no longer have the expense of a state manager in that district. And then, depending on what test scores look like in September, October, when those come out, we may be pulling some of the education recovery staff that are working in that district out of that district. So, I expect that cost to go down.
That's always good news, too.
Thank you very much.
Just to ask a question about this decision about state assistance. Does it, under Kentucky law, is this a decision for a certain period of time? Or what's the maximum time, I guess, by law, before the next audit? Or is, is there a timetable for that?
So, the timetable is the same with management. The three years, within three years, you would have to perform another management audit. Now, that doesn't mean that in 18 months, we couldn't decide, but based on progress, that we want to go back in and do that audit then. But we could definitely do one within that three-year time, in that time period.
Just to make sure that I understand. So, they were in assistance, Menifee was in assistance for about six months, and in management for about, almost going on four years. And then, we're going back to assistance with, hopefully, they'll continue the progress and move out.
Yes. When they originally went into assistance under a, a local superintendent, you know, that was, it just didn't go well. They didn't grasp assistance and the, and the assistance from the department and the help. And so, that caused us to have to go to the management level. And so, that, you know, that's kind of their, their story on that. But we really think it's necessary to move to the assistance. We, we want to be able to continue to provide some support, maybe just not on the phone with them every single day, maybe once every three days. But, because the capacity is building. the capacity is building, but we don't want to just leave them completely. We want to see this work. We want to see this to be long-term and sustainable without department help. And I think it's worth noting, too, you know, they've had several, they have a new principal in one of their elementary buildings for the upcoming school year. They have a fairly new high school principal, and they have several new central office staff members starting on July 1. So we are really going to, during this state-assistance time, really try to build that capacity with that new central office team, so that the superintendent will have good support, and eventually they won't have to have state assistance from the department.
If we could hear from Todd Allen just for a second. Todd, what's the board's authority in this case? We obviously need to support something moving forward, but if you could just speak briefly what the board's options are here.
Sure. So the Commissioner has made the recommendation in this situation for state assistance. Based on that recommendation, the local board would have had the right to ask for a 13B administrative hearing before the State Board of Education if they challenged the Commissioner's recommendation. The local board has waived that. They said they do not want to come before the State Board and have a hearing. They're accepting the Commissioner's recommendation of state assistance. So in this situation, the State Board now could accept the Commissioner's recommendation of state assistance. The alternatives would be, you know, to not accept the Commissioner's recommendation, and then he could bring back to you a different recommendation. But state assistance, state management, are based on the Commissioner's recommendation to the State Board.
Great. Other questions for our distinguished panel? So before us is the Commissioner's recommendation that our board designate the Menifee County School District for State Assistance to address a pattern of significant lack of efficiency and effectiveness in the governance and administration of the district that continues to exist. At this point, if someone is so inclined to make a motion to that effect.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion. Joe, second from Ben. Any additional discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, we've asked the Commissioner to go through the board's initiatives, with a couple of them at every meeting. And that's our next item on the agenda. It's just an overview on another initiative or two. Amanda Ellis as well.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. We want to talk through another component of the KBE's mission statement, this time focusing on increased family and community involvement. We want to talk through some of the, not an inclusive list, but some select key priorities, key initiatives we have happening in the Department of Education that support the board's work in this area. And so the first one.
Yep. I'll hit this one, and we'll just go back and forth. So the first one we have is the Parent Advisory Council. This is not required, but is one of the advisories that the Commissioner calls forward as a shareholder group to receive feedback. And they are an invaluable group. We have 18 members that are appointed, their parents from all across the state. We also have involved the PTA representative, Pritchard Committee also has someone, and the Kentucky Association for School Councils has a representative as well. And they really get to hear about the same topics you all hear about through the lens of parents, and what would be helpful in communication. We had great feedback from them for the high school graduation requirements, lots of feedback about understanding, how we can communicate their personal experiences with their own children. And so it's just an invaluable group. They meet about four times a year, and membership changes up a couple, every two years. And so we really try to have a regional approach with our parents and really honor their time, because they're taking time off of work or away from their families to come meet with us. But it's a, it's a great way for us to hear their voices and to give us feedback on what we do at the agency.
Yeah, we've been able to use them as a key focus group to bounce ideas off of. We've also been able to take members who serve on that Parent Advisory Council and ask them to, serve in some different areas in the department to give us advice and feedback as well. So it's been a really powerful group. Very similar, I provide a monthly column in the statewide Parent Teacher Association newsletter. Like Amanda said, this is information that is communicated with you all, it's communicated with educators across the state. But in providing this column to the PTA, I'm able to provide it in a way that I think is much more accessible for a non-educator audience. To give you an example, the column that, the most recent column we wrote, I'm not even sure it's out yet, is around the teacher shortage issues that we have in helping parents to understand the challenges that we're facing across the state with attracting and retaining teachers in the profession. We lay out some information about initiatives we have in place at the department level, but also in a real exciting way, we talk with them about the alternative routes to teacher certification. One, so that if parents potentially have some interest but didn't know that there are some ways outside of traditional university-based preparation programs to get into the teaching profession, it may be something that sparks their interest, and they might consider coming into the profession. The other piece, though, is to ask them to spread that information with their friends, with their neighbors, so that they all have a more informed idea of what's happening from the Department of Education, and they get to hear it directly from us.
Another approach that we have, that's a very strong partnership, is with the Governor's Office of Early Childhood. I cannot speak highly enough about this group of professionals, because they are the epitome of family engagement. This is one of the biggest components of engaging families of young children, when they're young parents, and what to do in this critical developmental stage. And so being a part of the Early Childhood Advisory Council, we play a very active role in that. And the Governor's Office of Early Childhood convenes Head Start, state-funded preschool, and childcare together. And so when we're together, it's kind of a mecca of support for families, and really we learn a lot from them and their approaches. In preschool settings, there's a lot of home visits that go on, a lot of connections with families, that honestly, we see as a model to build up and learn more about to do, as we provide for more of that pre-K-12 setting. But even as it goes on, what's the role of KDE to support parent engagement at different stages in children's lives. And that's something we need to grow in. And so we find that the partnership with the Governor's Office of Early Childhood is very powerful. We're a really strong partner in their PDG grant that Secretary Ramsey mentions. I don't know if he'd mention it today, but I know he has in the past. That is a grant that is to enhance the quality of early childhood for at-risk students, to really emphasize the choice and knowledge of families to make decisions for their youngest children on how they engage them in learning, and what opportunities they have for childcare, quality childcare or preschool settings. And so this is a planning piece, but we have been very much involved. We have multiple members from KDE involved in this grant to really be a part of a unified system. And that relationship started back, if you all remember, back to the Race to the Top Early Learning Challenge, where we have a unified system of quality rating. We've continued that partnership onto the next initiatives, have continued to build our systems. But this is a big piece of that to recognize that our family engagement really starts before they enter our schools at a compulsory level, but to start to build those strong skills and relationships to be supportive.
The family-friendly version, or family-friendly oriented Kentucky School Report Card is something that we're really proud of. We're really proud of the progress this board and the department have made in producing a school report card that, on the landing page, and I would say throughout, is more easy to understand, more easy to digest for the non-educator parent than we've typically had before. And so the data that educators and researchers want and are interested in, in the performance of our schools, and the spending in our schools, continues to be available. But we've put great emphasis in wanting the face of the KDE school report card to be something that's easily understood by parents. So you see lots of data visualizations. You see language that is not the educationese language that we typically use when we're talking with educators. You even see some guiding questions for parents that, if you hover, that allow them to say, allow them to understand what this number means, or what this language means. And so Kathy, you know, we've had some conversation with you. We hear you loud and clear, and agree that we have to do a better job of promoting that, and of getting that out. But we are quite proud of the work that's happening in collaboration with our vendor to produce something that we think will be much more easy to understand for parents.
I want to second that. I think Kentucky and the folks here in particular are doing an outstanding job with the school report card. I really encourage everybody to go there and click around and pretend you're looking for a school for your child, and have all these questions that you would like answered. And, because we could really use all the feedback we can get as to ease of use and availability of.
It's not finished.
No.
We're missing a lot of data, but I know we're working fast and furiously to get it up there. But I think it is a huge tool for helping families find information they desperately need about the schools. And if any of you has a great idea about how we could market this, so that we can, you know, encourage the parents in our Commonwealth to go there. And are we tracking the number of clicks and all of that? I mean, I'd like to see if we do implement a campaign, if we could measure the change over time.
I don't know all the data that we're tracking. That'd be a Jessica question.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi. We don't have them in front of me, obviously. The numbers still are slightly lower than we would like. But as we get closer to the test score rollout in September, we will definitely be working on some marketing campaigns and some packets that we will distribute to districts that they can sort of personalize from their own standpoint. Each school has their own unique link. So once we sort of wrap our heads around how we will talk to the districts about those different sites for each school, then we will work with them to spread the word locally. I mean, we are doing, you know, social media and trying to talk about it with reporters. However, you know, it's such a new product that it's just slow to take off. So, like I said, we're working, especially in the fall this year, as the scores come out, to really drive home the message that it's out there and available for anybody.
Jessica, would you introduce yourself, in case somebody's watching?
Jessica Fletcher, Chief Communications Officer.
Okay. And if it's okay with Commissioner, if you'd stay with us here for questions, it'd be suspect. We'll be back to you.
One thing that I feel could be helpful is a obvious place, either on the landing page or whatever, where anybody who experiences a problem or has a question, that there's an easy way to email somebody with.
I believe that is in the bottom corner. I could be wrong.
Bottom corner, okay. Because I've been on it, I haven't seen it.
I'll check with that. And I'll work with our Office of Education Technology is actually spearheading, like, all of the background work of that. But I'll work with them on making that a little clearer.
And then at some point, just to have a page of frequently asked questions that people can go to, so they're not constantly emailing you, could already have been answered.
Yes.
So, anyway, good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So to continue our initiatives, the other important partnership we have is with the Pritchard Committee. So one of their strategic goals as well is the P3 initiative, really around parent support, and how to build parent knowledge and understanding of what their role is, and how to better help their children in those foundational years. And so we are working with them closely, because that's a very similar strategic goal of ours as well, around the early learning with literacy and numeracy. So the Pritchard Committee was just awarded earlier this year a $5 million grant on parent, like, TA centers across the state. I don't think they've established them yet, they're in the planning stages. And it's really to build the knowledge of the community members and parents of what's available for their children, and really to make wise choices and decisions, and to help equip them with what they need to do. And so we're excited to be a part of that work. And they really want to align it with our needs, because that's our, those are our audience. And so we want to definitely partner with that. But we see that as an opportunity, because Pritchard is a separate piece that specifically focuses on community and parent engagement. And so we want to make sure and really capitalize on that partnership to expand our knowledge and our services to reach as many families as possible.
What will they do with $5 million?
So I think it's to establish where they're going to have their centers, and then they'll provide technical assistance. So the training.
So they have to, primarily for personnel?
Correct. And so they're in the planning stages of that now for operationalizing, yes. And so once they get that established, I'll be happy to share that. That's, I mean, there's the fiscal agents, but they have absolutely included us in asking us the needs and where we see deficits and concerns. And so we can align the needs. So it's not a separate entity, but it's, we're all working towards the same goal.
And then finally, we're going to launch later today, at 1:00, what is by far the most exciting thing we're doing at the Kentucky Department of Education right now. And that is our summer reading initiative in partnership with the Children's Reading Foundation. They're going to be here to launch that with us as a key partner. And really, the heart of this is tackling summer slide. We understand that over the summer vacation, the summer break, particularly low-income kids and kids who are not engaged in enrichment and in learning opportunities, they tend to lose ground, both in reading and in math. One of the ways that we can stop some of that loss is by having kids read, or depending on their age, having their parents read to them. One of the early conversations I had when I came to the department was with Robin Kenny, whose office oversees the summer feeding program with locations across the state. And one of the things she said was, if we could find a way to partner with what we do with providing food to kids, with some type of learning opportunity, there could be tremendous potential to reach lots of kids and families. And that essentially is what we've done. Building on the summer feeding program, we are going to have opportunities for not only us, but hopefully some of you and legislators to go out and read with kids. We have book donations. We're going to be purchasing some additional books at very low cost that we can provide to kids. And we hope this is just the very beginning of something that we'll continue to build on and do more and more in the coming years. And so you'll see this initiative at the state level publicized. We have some districts that are signing on with us in this initial pilot year, where we're going to be targeting some resources in those districts as well. And as we go out and read to kids, we're also going to leave some information, some strategies with parents. Things that parents can be doing with their kids as they're reading. Some tips on reading to kids, questions we should be asking kids, giving them the opportunity to respond to it, respond to it, so that you're building their skills, not only in phonemic awareness and fluency, but in comprehension, and being able to go back and forth with you. So this is really, really exciting work. I won't say a whole lot more about it, because we'll talk about it later at 1:00. But really hoping that this is something that the KBE members will join us in as we get across the state with this initiative.
So with the exception of the last item, the summer reading initiative, I'm thinking our ability, let's say there's a half a million parents we want to talk to, I mean, it's half a million to a million somewhere in there, that we want to talk to. And if I had to guess at a number of the people that we'll actually interact with on each one of these things, they're all important, but that the number might be 5,000, or 10,000, or some relatively minor subset, and that may be too harsh, pardon the exaggeration, but anyway, a relatively minor subset, and it might tend to be, you know, to Kathy's point about the school report card, parents that are already, you know, that are already engaged, and this might help get them to another level, or ask some questions at school. But how do we reach, if it's not 10,000, and that last one might be, we might broaden the reach there, but if we want to reach 500,000 parents, you know, I did a recent news broadcast where they asked people, where do you get your news? And, you know, they asked people of different generations, you know, oh, I get it in the, you know, I get this print edition of something, and/or I get it online. And the younger adult generation was, well, I really don't go anyplace in particular. I figure if it's important, it will find me. And sort of the. And sort of the importance of, of just digital communication. And, you know, my, you know, I wonder if we want to reach especially the hardest to reach parents that aren't naturally focused on what's happening at, at the school or the reading program because of the penetration of smartphones, which is nearly universal, you know, is there a, is there a broad digital, you know, if we had a budget for it, if we could raise money for it, you know, is there a broad digital program that we could do across the state targeted in, obviously in Kentucky? You know, is there some kind of program to try to take that number from 10,000 to, you know, 300,000 or, or sort of chasing people down? How's, you want to know more about your school? You know, click here, you know, and I don't know what it is. But, you know, consistently, as you talk with teachers or professionals, they say, you know, home environment, what happens at home? And somebody asking that question, how to go at school today is just invaluable, you know, and that in telling, signaling to that child the importance of, of school. Anyway, I'd, I'd appreciate just kind of in the future here, sort of thinking about that, not, not cost constrained, but too much. But, you know, if we were able to find some dollars or raise some money, is there a digital program that we could go more directly to parents with the kind of resources that, that you have here, go more directly to them that they could, maybe somebody clicks on a report card they never did before, clicks on a summer initiative or a reading list or a, or a, or early childhood connection that, yes, you are, you know, look how many people are eligible and only X percent are taking advantage of it. But how can we as a department, you know, how can we directly communicate with this half a million plus parents or at least raise those numbers significantly? Again, not diminishing anything that's done here. It's all good stuff, but how do we get big scale?
Two words, social media. When I was with the cabinet, we did a campaign called Help Wanted Kentucky that was really targeted at getting people, any, any adult into the Work Ready Scholarship to, to get free tuition for high demand job majors. So I would propose something similar here, but all of that does take marketing dollars. And the way you really grow a kind of community on Facebook and Twitter especially is through promotions, you know, and you can do that relatively inexpensively compared to, you know, say buying a full-page newspaper ad or a television ad. You know, you can, with $10,000 to $15,000, you could really get a lot of attention towards one particular topic or branding towards an initiative, which we're working on in the communications department right now as we're, we're very much trying to kind of come up with a strategic communications plan. And part of that will be how do we reach parents? So, you know, like I said, it's not terribly expensive, but you do have to put some, some dollars behind it to get your post seen. For example, right now, what we do on social media without any marketing dollars behind it gets seen by typically about 2,000 people per post. And that, you know, as well as I do, that's just a very small fraction of Kentuckians. So in order to really grow your audience, you have to put some dollars behind it for Facebook to show it to the world.
So, and I think there's some connection here to sort of the, the massive issue the Commissioner put before us this morning. And, and maybe this is again, a topic that can't be resolved here, but if we did, you know, somehow agree to us either in the retreat in October or before then or some special focus on, you know, I think there are people in Kentucky that would like to contribute. They don't really know exactly how to, you know, how to contribute, but if it was a big initiative that would have a big impact, whether it's on reading initiative, you know, elementary reading initiatives or, or whatever, you know, I do think there are, there are fun, there are ways, there, there are funds available, especially in the levels you were talking about, Jessica, but even larger than that. But I wonder how we can get to those parents that right now aren't clicking on our, that, that aren't already, you know, sort of all about education. So, anyway.
Yeah.
I know for myself, for me, it would be an app, would be to download an app and have a central location. I mean, that's how, that's, that would be my interest or how I would get my information from a parent perspective if, if I knew everything was included in that app.
So one of the, one of the things we, we try to think through as well, and, and Tracy, I mean, you'd be a, a great one to, to help us think through this, is the, there's information we want to be able to communicate directly to parents and to families, but the primary relationship between parents needs to be with the local school district. And so we, we, we try, I don't, I don't know that we figured this out yet. We, we're trying to figure out kind of when and where and what is the initiative where we need to go directly to parents. I'll give you the, the one where we most recently had the conversation. It's around high school graduation requirements. So, you know, the state board's passed revised high school graduation requirements. And obviously that's something that's of interest to parents. But you know what, I mean, and it was at my direction, we decided that we are not going to communicate that directly to parents because I think it would cause confusion. Because the state is setting minimum standards around high school graduation requirements. Local boards are adopting their own requirements that are going to be different from, from district to district. And so it, it really, I think, comes down to the specific initiative, the specific policy and whether it's useful or, you know, confusing for us to go directly to parents versus going to districts and then have districts work directly with parents. It's a, it's a, it's a difficult balance for us to figure out.
Exactly what I was going to say. I think it does have to be a balance between your district and, and our agency because a lot of people aren't sure of our role because it's very different. It's not a school setting. It's not an LEA. But I think having that combined partnership on that would, what is appropriate to communicate the working with districts because a lot of districts, even the one I came from, didn't have a communications department. We didn't have a marketing person. It's not our expertise. Our expertise are kids. And so really to have even, you know, materials for districts to customize is a huge help to districts, which Jessica and I have talked about. This is not new for her by any means. She and I have talked about possibilities of things that we could offer to districts to use and personalize to increase parent communication, but we could still have, you know, our information available. But I definitely think there's a good balance to find to better communicate with families and engage. And, and really the other way, the other thing we need to think about too, is in each area, parents, as you all know, parent children in different ways and engage differently as they get older. So how we engage high school parents is not the same way we would want to engage early learners because there's a new role and you're developing your children to do different things as they grow up. And how you engage as a parent changes. And I think we need to be cognizant of that because it doesn't always look the same. And so how we customize that even to be appropriate and relevant, because if it seems kiddish or something that's not appropriate for kids, you're trying to become independent adults, you're not going to be interested in that. So I think there has to definitely be a balance, but, but it's an area that we see as something we need to continuously grow in and, and have good strategies around to really engage our, our families and community. It's important they have to be a part of this to help with student success. They're absolutely integral.
We wouldn't want to bypass the district with specific information, but just how to, parents to encourage involvement with their...
Absolutely.
Four-year-old or their 14-year-old.
That's right.
So, anyway, maybe for another day.
I think that'd be a great topic of conversation though, to, to really dig in in a retreat.
And we're actually, as we're working on our communications strategic plan, we're finalizing a survey that we'll be sending to the public and to internal stakeholders such as the board. So I would really appreciate your feedback when that goes out.
Other questions?
Just a comment, something. Back to what you were talking about, the high school graduation requirements. I've had a lot of questions about that. I still think though, having something that says this is the minimum standards, but always refer to your local, the LEAs, that, you know, that the, those are the standards by which your area goes to. You can still have that general information there, so don't underestimate the value of that because I, I find over and over how many times parents are confused that, and this was said earlier, that the boards, local boards will say, well, that's a state policy and it's not. And then, you know, but it's their way of just brushing the parent off. And I've, I've had that happen recently with a couple of parents asking me questions. I said, you've got to go back to your Board of Education. They said, well, it's the state. And I said, no, it's not. And I can find that with you all and so forth. So, you know, so there is some value in having the generic minimal requirements or comments about it, but then say, you know, but it's a local decision and refer to that.
And we, I will tell you, we do have an FAQ that's pretty comprehensive per component. And we've had a cross-office work around that to answer questions around career and technical education and every component of the graduation piece. And it's a pretty lengthy FAQ, but it's imperative to have because of that for community families and school districts who are getting used to it and are writing policy. So we have updated that piece and we have included an FAQ that's, this cross-agency that would answer questions. But, so we have, we, and we've solicited that, not so much at community and parent. You're right, because of the community piece, but we have pushed it out pretty hard against the districts and counselors specifically since they do majority of the scheduling. And then, of course, our boards have made, been made aware, our superintendents with policy changes. And I know KSBA has been working on a draft policy, so those pieces are in place, but we, we do have them, but we specifically have not solicited, you're right, the parent or community on that piece.
And just one other comment too, because I've been on some of the PACs before. It's important that we try to, and I know it's difficult because if you have single parents, it's difficult, but, you know, to make sure you're getting a, a very diverse group, whether it's socioeconomic, whether it's single parent or, or...
Absolutely.
A grandparent, you know, that's another issue, or, or foster kids. And then also just, you know, the ethnicity, you know, to make sure that we're very...
Diverse.
In, in who's on those. Because so many, I know from my personal experience, so many times it's the same people that get picked. And locally, I can't speak for the state, but locally. And so I think it would be important to make sure you're getting, you're hearing from parents from all groups.
And we, we've in fact been really intentional about doing that. I feel really, I feel really good about the, the group of parents we have serving on our Parent Advisory Council. I think it, I think it is representative of Kentucky. And really the diverse experiences and perspectives on any, any indicator you could, could think of.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the presentation of the Dr. Samuel Robinson and Dr. Johnny Grissom Awards. Commissioner? Well, that's me.
Two.
Am I joining you up there? Is that what you're telling me, Commissioner? Okay, our first, first award today, are you, is that right? We're doing this together?
Yes, I'm with you.
You're, you're with me the whole way, okay. Our first award today is the Dr. Samuel Robinson Award. It's been given to an individual or group in Kentucky for outstanding leadership, commitment and service in promoting equity and opportunity to learn at high levels for all Kentucky students. Our recipient for the Dr. Samuel Robinson Award is Dr. Chandra Faraya. Dr. Faraya, thank you for, thank you for being here. She has served on the Floyd County Board of Education since 2001, where she has not only donated her time to the betterment of Floyd County education, but also her, her funding in the hopes of changing the lives of the local children. Upon moving to Floyd County in 1971, she opened up her medical practice where she delivered more than 3,000 children. She has donated to the local community college to fund education for single parents and made a large donation for no-interest student loans specifically to assist women that have been victims of domestic abuse to receive their education. She has also established a scholarship for 3,400 children that she delivered and created a scholarship fund of 1.6 million for other colleges and universities throughout Kentucky. She was nominated by the superintendent of Floyd County Schools, Danny Adkins. He said that she deeply cares, if all of that comments wasn't enough, but she, she deeply cares for all of the influences on children's lives and that she wants students to see possibilities where others would only see roadblocks. And his quote is, whether providing warm coats, school supplies or groceries to paying the heating bill, she is always ready to help and remove obstacles to student learning. She's also donated to the East Kentucky Science Center with the stipulation that every child in Floyd County receives free admission once a year. This has removed the financial burden from schools to visit the facility and she has gone, not just, not just her treasure, but her time, has gone and toured with the students on multiple occasions. And with that, if you would join me in welcoming Dr. Faraya.
Dr. Chandra has met with the students, which ultimately we had to work through with KHSAA, but all the student athletes, if they carried a 4.0, she would give them $100. She wrote 31 $100 checks to those students at Prestonburg High School. Two different libraries this year, Floyd County, she's given $10,000 to renovate. Two different occasions, so she is a blessing to our school system.
Thank you.
Thank you for this award. And most important thing, you know, everybody we know, the way economy is down, we're recession, first thing we do, higher education fee. You know, college increases their fees. Books get expensive, government cutting down the budget. My father told me when I was young, when time comes, education is the most important. When economy down, we should spend more money for the education because education will take you away from the poverty. And second thing, Floyd County, where I live, the, most of the kids in the Floyd County are the poorest kids in this country. We not only for kids. 50% kids raised by the grandparent, not by biological parent, other uncle, aunt, something. So what we, now what we did here, like about the community with the parent, but every child need our support. So what I like to do, our commissioner, your board member, maybe open your budget. I know you talk to the, you know, your budget for certain things, but we need to ask the governor, maybe we need to go every month, one time to the Frankfurt to have a breakfast with governor and get more money for every child in Kentucky. There's, there's ideas. And second thing, like, education is so important in my family. When I was young, my father gave me a book in my hand and he told me at the time that this book has a hidden key to the treasure for health, happiness and wellness. So education, books are so important, you know, new technology, but still the books written is still important. written is still important. And every child expectation high is so important, whether it's poor, rich, my and your kid will go to Yale, but every child can go to Yale if we give them something. So now the kids, see, I'm not against the sports, but tell me one thing, how many kids, basketball player will go to the college and give their scholarship? Five percent, maybe one percent. So I told the kids athletes, if you give four-point-zero GPA, not just only GPA, no smoking, no fight, and no novice, and no ticket if they're driving.
That's good.
And I expected maybe five or six kids, right? Athlete, four-point-zero. Even my superintendent expected eight or 10. But when they gave me number thirty-one, my first comment, they're going to bankrupt me. But now, there is a rule, some of the energy, we can cash money. So what I did, deal with them, I'm going to take the gettys bar for the tour. You know, there's a new bridge there, so I can walk on the bridge, and then I want to continue every year. Maybe bankrupt, maybe I can ask for more money from you people.
You may invite the Commissioner to go with us.
Well, yeah.
I don't have any money, though.
This is on her, Commissioner, I promise. This is on her, so.
My family, no, no, no. I and my family, we are not rich, but we are hard-working, middle-class people, but we just believe to share the body. And that's my religion, I'm J-A-I-N. My religion is the sharing. If you have money, you share with your neighbor, and kids are my neighbor. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Applause for you.
Oh, okay, is that better?
Yeah, I like her.
All right. So what do they put on that blue screen? They put a skyline or something?
A couple of years ago, the children in Floyd County who had never been to the beach, she chartered a bus and took them all to Myrtle Beach.
Oh.
I might need, I might need some of y'all to move. I need to get sent, so Commissioner's not mine.
You're off the screen, Commissioner. Yeah, there we go.
Now y'all got to scoot in a little bit closer.
Okay, we like each other.
Perfect, thank you all. Can I wave, Lord members?
Yes, ma'am.
One more with their Lord members. Wow. We are very excited and proud about Dr. Chandra. She's a blessing to have in our district, for sure.
Amen.
One person can make a big difference. Amen, really can, with the right heart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grissom.
Thank you.
I guess I'll
Oh, okay.
Sorry. I don't have any matches. I see some blue ones there. Come on, just two of y'all.
If I need more money, you have to stay with me.
I'm sure I said we didn't have any.
A little bit there.
All righty.
Thank you all.
Congratulations. All right, how you doing, Joe?
Exciting today.
Good news.
It's the Eighth Annual Dr. Johnny Grissom Award. This award recognizes those who exhibit leadership, commitment, and service to promote high student achievement through instructional equity and enclosing the achievement gap for all children. So we had a, let's see here. So our winner of this award today was nominated by Sarah Warren, a graduate teaching assistant at UK. Sarah says about our recipient, "As one of the most admirable, hard-working, and passionate educators in Kentucky." Prior to her teaching role with Kentucky School for the Deaf, she served on the dormitory staff, where she quickly learned sign language and began developing relationships with students. Throughout her career, she has remained committed to the pursuit of growth and achievement for all her students, and she has been employed by the Kentucky School for the Deaf for thirty-four years, and has become one of the most experienced and longest-serving staff members at the school. She's developed an agricultural program at the School for the Deaf that provides students with real-world knowledge and opportunities. She's created an agricultural curriculum that allows students to grow a community garden, raise chickens, favorite, and create floral arrangements that are sold in their classroom flower shop. Warren said that she has seen our recipient motivate her students to overcome their disability and pursue their passions within Kentucky's workforce. With great excitement, announce our award recipient today is Sandy Smock, agriculture teacher and FFA advisor for the Kentucky School for the Deaf. Sandy? Thank you for your thirty-four years of dedication. It's just amazing, and you're leaving, still leaving, an incredible legacy, so thank you. If you'd like to make any comments, you're welcome to, but no need to, it's completely up to you.
I just want to say one little thing.
Why don't you stand here, so people could, people could hear you.
I want to say Kentucky School for the Deaf is an outstanding institution of education for deaf and hard-of-hearing students. It is built on the concept that we are their second family, and we are a family to each other. I walked into that job, a high school dropout. Today, I have three college degrees and a master's in education administration. I owe that to people like my friends and former bosses and former principal and former assistant principal, my current colleague and friend, Dr. Rohr, her high school man. It has been the greatest blessing my entire life, and I will forever be grateful, and I thank you.
Thank you.
And whoever you'd like in the picture would be wonderful.
We're eventually going to get that whole gang. We'll start with you, if you want.
Commissioner, over here.
This section a little bit more, there you go, perfect.
We have to be somewhere at twelve fifty.
Closer, closer, we're like in a, it feels like an elevator.
So we go downstairs for lunch.
Thank you. I guess I want to, this is my good thing.
Why don't you get in the middle?
Yeah, yeah. You stay right here, you're going to work right here. This is good.
But I also think lunch is down here.
Okay. That'd be good. Did you want one, did you want one on the phone? No, it'd be fine. Okay.
This handshaking business.
I don't want to.
All right, our next, next agenda item is lunch, and it looks like we're in the first-floor Training Room A, and just to make clear to everybody that no, no business will be conducted in this meeting. So we'll be KB members, executive leadership team, and other guests, the Commissioner.
And our awardees.
Awardees will be there as well. Awesome. And with that, if I don't see any objection to going into recess, we'll be recessed.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
First floor. It is.